President.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. I do not believe that anybody is absent or present and accounted for. So modification of rules for public comment. At the last meeting, council approved having all public comment occurred during citizen communication to help with running an orderly meeting. Persons who registered to speak under multiple items will be allowed to speak multiple times. Testimony regarding the land use hearing on tonight's agenda will occur during the hearing. We will continue this practice unless any council member wants to make a motion to go back to the public comment on resolutions and ordinances separately. At this time, are there any, is there any desire to change the way that we have done that? I do not see any hands going up. Therefore, we'll move forward with the way we've done things in the past. We'll move on to citizen communication. Per council policy, citizen communication is a time on our agenda for the public to address council on business and affairs of the city. The city council is not able to hear any comments at this time on land use matters that are before or may become before council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. As a reminder, council must wait until administrative council business to take action in response to citizen communication. The city required advanced registration in order to participate in citizen communication for this meeting. If you are currently in this meeting to speak during citizen communication, please listen for me to call your name and the clerk will unmute you so you may begin. If you do not respond or are disconnected, you may miss your chance to comment. Please give your name and address for the record and keep your comments limited to three minutes. Thank you. First up is Jim Hayes, who wishes to speak on ordinance 2286.
Mr. Hayes, you're unmuted and you have three minutes.
Great, thank you very much. This is James Hayes, Oakwood Homes, 4908 Tower Road, Denver. I was following up on a letter I submitted to the staff on Friday regarding the new weed ordinance that's being proposed. We, of course, are the developers of reunion and we are taking down additional property from the full and wider family. We believe that the current standards are acceptable and that do allow for appropriate farming activities while still maintaining noxious weeds and, of course, keeping the perimeters mode to a reasonable level. So I will let my letter kind of stand as our comments on this and we'd encourage you to consider keeping the ordinance the same or at a minimum possibly delaying so we could have additional conversations with the city staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Next is Shayna Oliver.
Shayna Oliver, if you are on the meeting, if you can hit star nine to raise your hand. Oh, I see she just joined now. Shayna Oliver, you're allowed to speak and you have three minutes.
Hello?
Yep, you're allowed to speak and you have three minutes.
All right, my name is Shayna Oliver. I do have four children and four children I'm taking care of as well as being a member of the tribal nation, the Navajo Nation, and I live 5.5 miles from Suncor and I could even smell the films or whatever they let out at night, usually after five, even as late, past eight o'clock, you can smell these films, which obviously drift from Suncor as well, as well as I am, I do have a history of underlying health conditions of having asthma as well as indigenous people have the highest rates of asthma, diabetes, heart disease, cancer, leukemia, mental illness and premature deaths as well as birth adverse birth outcomes than the general population. And when we leave the reservation, we are segregated into these communities that offer affordable housing in these communities that are disproportionately impacted by air pollution and, and as well as not having access to adequate clean water as most of the residents of Commerce City don't have adequate access to clean water for cooking and drinking, but they do still continue to bathe in this water. And I think with the settlement money that Suncor has paid the nine million of that 2.6 million is said to go to the community's impacts, you should reach out to every resident of Commerce City as well as surrounding areas impacted by air pollution and water contamination. Reach out to every one of those residents and ask them what impacts they are having as residents and how long they've been living in the, in the community as well as working towards getting these residents adequate clean water and making sure that they have transparency when it comes to air monitoring. And I just think it's unprecedented that even as a person that's looking for a new home and is low income, I am forced to look into Adams County and Commerce City as my choices of affordable homes to buy. And you guys should take more care of the people and the residents of these areas over the industry that is being dominated by a market, a market that shows that they are no longer a leader in, in a commodity that is no longer necessary for us to be relying on. And now it's time to change the economics before there is no choice for us. So start making the choices now rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Kristy Douglas.
Kristy, you're unmuted and you have three minutes.
My name is Kristy Douglas. I'm a resident of Commerce City and I would like to comment on the town hall on oil and gas that took place on the seventh. And I'd like to say that I'm not trying to single out anyone, but I was really disturbed by the comment that was made regarding full and wider. And I want to say that it left me feeling like the well-being of a wealthy developer is more important than that of the citizens. It was said that full and wider needed to frac so that they could do other things using the money that was made by fracking. And I saw that as an insult. To me, that's double dipping and it's not the responsibility of the residents to make that sacrifice just so they can do business. Oil and gas does not do business in the normal sense of the term doing business. They're asking us to allow them the right to set up an industrial operation to make money for themselves. So let's be perfectly clear about that. We should not be asked to permanently seal our image as the industrial armput of Colorado for the sake of a handful of temporary jobs for a few citizens, just to make sure the wealthy get wealthier. I feel like this council is leading us in the wrong direction. Just remember that once the wells are in, they're in and there's no turning back. It's well known that this is a boom and bust industry and when push comes to shove, they will leave us with the bust and walk away with the boom. Please don't feel like you need to roll out the red carpet for this industry. Think of our future first and how making it easy for this industry to come in will impact that future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next from the agenda air presentations, will the city clerk, please give the E470 representative the floor?
Mayor, I think unless Mr. Sheasley wants to correct me, I think the council has to consent to amend the agenda till I'll be E470 item to go first.
Well, I'm reading the script and in the script it says, ask the city clerk of the E470 representative is present.
Okay. Looks like Derek is on. Derek, I'm going to allow you to talk and then I'll pull up the presentation for you.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to, first of all, tell you I appreciate your staff and council member Hurst for helping us get this set up so that we could bring to you information regarding the analysis that we had done for potentially having E470 designated as a hazmat route. So one of the first things, I'm Derek Slack, I'm the roadway maintenance manager at E470 and hopefully we'll get John Larson on to co-present. He's from SEH, the consultant that we had do the analysis. So first of all, is to ask the question, is there a benefit to our commute, to our community and the local jurisdictions if E470 is designated as a hazmat route? And does the route provide potential to reduce the travel on our local jurisdictions roadways? And does it have the potential to reduce the distances traveled by hazmat vehicles? And then we have to make sure that it meets the state procedural directive 1903.1. Next slide. So our board gave us direction to, to look into having E470 designated as a hazmat route analysis. So we hired a consultant and they went through that analysis and they followed the state directive 1903.1 to do that analysis. Performing the analysis does not commit us to actually submitting a petition to the Colorado State Patrol to have E470 designated as a hazmat route. It's just to, so that we can provide factual information so a decision, a decision can be made on that information. So we're at the point where we've completed the analysis and now we're out meeting with stakeholders to present the information and answer any questions that people may have on the information. Next slide. So the Colorado State Patrol, they're the ones that are responsible for the designation and maintenance of hazmat route. There's a lot of other things that they're responsible for in relation to that, but I'm just calling out that bolded area there that they are the ones responsible for the designation. Next slide. So a lot of times when people talk about hazardous material, you know, visions of Three Mile Island or something come up. And in reality, of the hazardous material that's transported, roughly 80% of that is fuel. And then you have some of the other items like paint, propane, pesticides, all of those other items that are there as well. Now the amount of material being transported, of course, transporting a gallon of gasoline is much different than transporting 1,000 gallons of gasoline. So there are some parameters of when it's actually regulated as a hazardous material. The other thing is wanted to make sure everybody is aware that trucks will, that haul hazardous material will drive on local roadways even though they're not a hazardous route because they're allowed to use the shortest reasonable route to get to and from their pickup and delivery points. And then E470, we're not considering being designated as a nuclear route. Next slide. So this map shows the current hazardous routes in the Denver metro area. The red ones are the hazardous routes, green are hazmat and nuclear routes. And then it shows E470 and how that could tie into the network. Next slide. So one of the things we wanted to do was look at some examples of potential truck routes that are being taken. So we picked the Magellan fuel rack, which is at Smith Road just off I-70 and 225 and said, okay, there's a lot of trucks traveling out of there hauling fuel to and from convenience stores in the Denver metro area. If they're hauling from there, what are the routes that they'd have to take now based on the current hazmat routes versus if E470 is designated as a hazmat route? So you can see the Magellan location up in the kind of upper left, the red dot. And currently they have to come down 225. And let's just pick the first one, the Shell Station number one there. And they'd come across, they'd exit 225, come across E470 on Jewel and get to the convenience store. So in that, in that, they're traveling quite a distance on the local roadways, plus they're driving by some schools and stuff in that location as well. And you can see some of the other routes there as well. Won't go through all the detail, but you can see similar things there. So the current distance they have to travel is about 15.5 miles for, to that Shell Station versus if E470 is designated be 10.7. Next slide. So that was the south end. This is the north end of E470. So really not the same mileage savings as we saw on the south end, but there's still some advantages with, if you take number one there, the Murphy USA gas station, some advantages in that the distance that they have to travel on the local roadway system is reduced. And there's some schools that we show that they're not having to drive by as well, even though they may have a bit longer route. E470 could still be a faster route for them and they're not starting and stopping in traffic at signals and those sort of things as well. So if John is on, he'll continue. If not, I will go to the next slide. Next slide. No, John. Heard he raised his hand. Okay, I'll continue on. So this is the stuff that the state procedural directive.
Sorry, Derek.
There he is.
Yep.
Go ahead, John.
Let's see. Okay, so thanks Derek and sorry for being a little late today. So state procedural directive 1903.1 provides guidelines by which the Colorado State Patrol will evaluate hazmat, the hazmat route petition. So the submitted E470 hazmat route analysis report seeks to address and also provide answers to these seven guidelines. So it kind of emulates the type of information that would be contained in a petition. I will focus today on the data portion of these guidelines, which is item number three. Does the route provide greater safety to the public than other feasible routes? So the majority of my presentation will focus on traffic volumes, crash rates and emergency response. So next slide, please. Truck drivers transporting hazardous materials have a choice for which hazmat route they want to travel on. So we evaluated how E470 would be expected to perform against potential alternate routes in terms of both congestion and safety performance. And so this slide shows the E470 corridor in blue, but as well as the potential alter, alternate routes that truck drivers could choose within the region of E470. And these, these alternate routes are shown in orange. Next slide, please. One data set contained in the hazmat guidelines looks at traffic volumes, which is an indicator of congestion. And another is crash history, which is an indicator of safety. So these two data sets were compiled for E470 and then compared to the alternate routes. So this, this slide shows traffic volumes as well as crash history summaries. I will point out a few. On the traffic volume side, E470 carries approximately 36,000 to 53,000 vehicles per day on it. There are two comparable routes to this and that would be the north sections of I-76 and US-85, which carry about 40,000 vehicles per day. All other alternate routes carry significantly more traffic volumes. As an example, 225 carries about 150,000 vehicles per day and I-25 carries upwards of 250,000 vehicles per day. I-70 in the central area carries about 217,000 vehicles per day. On the safety side, you'll see a white box with a leader to each roadway. That's the crash history. In the, the summary for that crash history is the bottom line, which shows crashes per mile per year. E470 experiences about four crashes per mile per year. Contrast that with, say, US-85 and I-76 exhibits about 19 crashes per mile per year. I-25 exhibit or experiences the largest number of crashes. They experience about 89 crashes per mile per year. Next slide, please. And so the, the next major data set for the report included is, is to document the sensitive areas within a one mile bandwidth or one mile band on each side of E470 to determine whether there are, essentially to determine whether there are adequate emergency response regions to cover the E470 corridor. So this slide shows schools, medical services as well as emergency response within that one mile band. The color coded lines show the various emergency response regions and shows, and essentially shows that emergency services cover the entire length of the E470 corridor with some, with some overlap in the central and southern regions. Next slide, please. And so based on our, our data compilation, we've summarized in the report, the categories from the left column, the metric by which they were measured against and then our findings. And our findings show that E470 has the lowest percent trucks currently running on it and generally a lower daily traffic volume. E470 has the lowest crash rate. Their bridges and pavement are in excellent condition. One thing we, I didn't talk about, but is documented are the environmentally sensitive areas in the corridor. And so there's approximately 2,050 acres of wetlands along the E470 corridor. Another one that we didn't talk about was the environmental justice population, which measures, if I suppose if E470 were designated a hazmat route, it measures the environmental justice population that would be impacted as a result. And so the, the finding there is that environmental justice population per mile is less than the I-25, I-70 and I-225 corridors, but is slightly higher than the I-76 and US-85 corridors. Next slide, please. And so then based on the earlier graphics that Derek presented showing the potential fuel truck routes, both with and without the E470 designation, that, that sort of showed you that there, there could be potential benefit to local jurisdictions if E470 is designated as a hazmat route. The route, the route would provide potential to reduce hazmat travel on the roadways of those local jurisdictions by, by hopefully having the truck drivers pick E470 instead of those, those local routes. The route also provides potential to reduce distances traveled by those hazmat vehicles. Next slide. And then lastly, we, we did draw some conclusions based on the information as it relates to that procedural directive. And so I'll just reiterate those conclusions here. E470 generally does carry less traffic than those alternate routes, has fewer crashes per mile per year than the alternate routes, is in excellent physical condition, both the roadway and the bridges, would not disproportionately impact environmental justice populations. And as that, as that one graphic showed, E470 can be adequately served by emergency response and medical service facilities. And so that, that concludes the, the presentation portion. So I think Derek and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, before we get to questions, I need to apologize to everybody. I, I do not have my glasses with me and reading small text on an iPad screen. I totally messed up the agenda here and what was supposed to happen. Dylan tried to catch me and I didn't catch what he was saying. So I apologize that the E470 meeting was, or presentation was moved to the front. It shouldn't have been. At this time, does anybody have any questions for the board member, for the E470 representatives? Councilwoman Noble?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Hughesman. Thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate it. I asked to have the presentation tonight because my ward has E470 on both the east side and its north side. So we cover many miles around that area. So I have a few questions about this. In terms of the study, some of it has to do with proportionality. If you don't have as many vehicles on E470, then you're not going to have as many accidents. Did the study look at whether moving trucks to E470 would increase the traffic and by how much? That's my first question. Do you want me to just keep going?
Derek, do you want me to answer?
Yeah, John, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, so thanks, Councilwoman Noble. The study did not try to predict what the future truck traffic would be on E470. That, that's something that's sort of a nebulous figure just because, because of the nature of the, the driver and his, he gets to make his own decision in kind of choosing that E470 route. So we, we would have a, we could probably ballpark it, but we have not at this time. I think the key takeaway is that there, there's significantly lower traffic volumes on E470. And you're right, that is, that is one of the, sometimes that's one of the causal factors for crashes to occur. I do not anticipate though that the, the traffic volumes would increase to a level that it would cause congestion.
My greatest concern is that this is a 75 mile an hour highway. And inviting hazmat trucks on a 75 mile an hour highway is different than being on I-25 or 76 or 85. So that would lend itself to more crashes and intrinsically worse results because of these being hazmat trucks. On page five of your slides, you show, or the fifth slide, there are stars on the map and I was curious what those maps are. And also it appears on slide seven that there is something around the 104th Street area in Commerce City that is considered a hazardous waste site. Would that be the Republic landfill?
So on slide number seven, you said, and I'm sorry, explain that again?
Well, on slide number five, there are stars on the map. What do those stars reflect? I don't see it in the legend.
Oh, that's at the bottom. It's municipalities that require gasoline, diesel and liquefied petroleum gas comply with routing requirements. So there's a difference jurisdictions.
Okay, thank you. And then on page seven, it appears to show that there is a hazardous site here in Commerce City on the east side of Commerce City at, at 470. And I'm curious what that is. Is that the landfill, the Republic landfill?
So are you saying at 104th and is it one of the clouded areas?
Yeah, it's on slide seven.
Okay, I'm looking at slide seven.
And so you're saying, the slide refers to various potential dump sites for hazardous waste.
No, what this is, is this is not hazardous weight, waste. This is hazardous material.
Okay, hazardous material.
So what this is, this slide shows if a truck is leaving the Magellan fuel rack, the potential destinations they would have. So if you look at like the Murphy USA gas station is shown as number one, we've got the tie coming across to that. Conoco gas station's number two, another Conoco gas station's three, and then Phillips gas station is four. So it's just looking at where their destination may be for hauling fuel from that fuel rack to a convenience store.
Okay, my apologies for misreading the, the slide. Thank you very much for explaining that. And I, I think that, in my view, it's, oh, oh, one other thing. Are you charging a, a different fee? in my view, it's, oh, oh, one other thing. Are you charging a, um, a different fee to any of these, uh, trucks?
So we're, there's really no way that we'd be able to, um, toll these trucks different than any other trucks. That's not something we've talked about. That's not something that's been contemplated, um, in doing that.
Okay, then my final thought is that I, I can see that this will probably go through. But I would only support it if the speed limit was no greater than you would find on I twenty-five and these vehicles were required to drive in the right-hand lane. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Hurst?
Yeah, I appreciate the presentation. So, um, you know, I've been able to chew on this for about a week longer than everybody else because this was the presentation that we received, uh, at the E four seventy board meeting. So one thing I'd like to consider, I think they did a great job, um, with the, the data they had and available to them. And so, uh, really good analysis, but from a, from a metro-wide perspective, because this study did a good job focusing on E four seventy. We already have an industry-based in Commerce City and North Aurora that's going to generate some hazardous material truck traffic. The load racks, the fuel, uh, all the four different fueling sites generate its own truck traffic for the two seventy corridors, the seventy, I seventy-six corridors, and even I twenty-five. And Susan, just to note, I twenty-five is a hazmat and nuclear route and it's seventy-five miles an hour north of, um, E four seventy. So there are seventy-five mile an hour hazmat routes in several places in the state, unfortunately. Uh, we don't have different trucks, speed limits or right lane rules anywhere in Colorado currently. Um, and the only reason I bring that up is because it can create some confusion, uh, amongst what the system is doing. So the idea of moving, uh, hazmat on the E four seventy to me makes a significant change in the flow of traffic on two seventy, I seventy, I twenty-five and I seventy-six, that major corridor, central corridor. And why I say that is we're, we're going to keep the traffic from the industry in the central part of our city, uh, in North Aurora. So why don't we move the passenger traffic that's traveling through, around the metro area as far out from the metro area as possible? And so giving the C, or the E four seventy route as an alternative, you can completely avoid the entire metro area. You can avoid I, uh, I two twenty-five, you can avoid I seventy, and we all know we would love to have people avoid the Central Seventy Project right now. Uh, and so it would decrease the impact that is felt in the core part of our city on two seventy and some of the, the primary, uh, access points to those areas might not feel the impacts immediately, but will definitely feel the overall impacts, um, as traffic begins to move frequently, um, onto E four seventy. And Susan, I believe the traffic will increase on E four seventy if this passes because trucking is about keeping your wheels moving. The only way to be efficient for our economy is to continue moving their wheels. The last thing they want to do is drive up I two twenty-five or twenty-five or I seventy. Because what do they do? They stop, they stop running. That's good from all aspects. Uh, truck drivers actually, uh, are proven to be far more unsafe after spending a time in stop and go traffic. Um, they become very fatigued and that's when their driving abilities begin to, um, get less. So keeping trucks moving at a, at a, a fair rate is actually, uh, proven to be much safer. Also hazmat transportation is, um, as heavily regulated as the airline industry in terms of the background checks you must go through, the extra, additional training, um, that you must go through and the compliance audit reviews that you must maintain, uh, to keep your hazmat transport license for your company. So you can't drive until you're one twenty, or can't drive a hazmat truck till you're twenty-one. So these drivers have been tested, tried and tested in their industry and go through the most rigorous hiring, um, process in that industry. Again, it's equally regulated to the airline pilot industry. So, um, I know that's not the view that everybody would have on the, the trucking, uh, workforce, but they're highly trained, uh, highly professional and hazmat actually has the safest, uh, road record out of any trucking operation on the roadway. So, um, I, I can't say I fully support, um, you know, seventy-five miles an hour, but I'm also not a traffic engineer. And traffic engineers will immediately, uh, begin to argue that two different speed limits on the road actually causes more, uh, problems than it reduces. Um, and so, you know, I would let those conversations, um, stay within the traffic engineer, uh, world who, you know, they're putting their license on this and they're doing traffic flow studies. Um, and we'll look at the, uh, overall build of the road. Is there curves in the road? Is there a sun glare? All the things that go into consideration of, uh, creating a speed limit. So I think there are positive benefits to our overall system that's, that our citizens use on a day-to-day basis. By pulling some traffic from the metro area and moving it out to the eastern corridor, uh, I feel like we will gain efficiencies and reduction of congestion, um, as the metro area continues to grow in population. So, uh, I, I don't take that lightly because I've been the first to raise my hand about, um, corridors that would be utilized coming off of E four seventy. But being, um, being this designation possibility, so this still has to pass CSP's full inspection and that's not an easy one to pass as well. There will be, uh, public hearings with that. It's a hundred and eighty-day process. So everybody in our, in our city, because we will be a stakeholder, will have a, of the ability to have a say in that. So this isn't the end of this discussion by any means. Um, so I think that's why I support it is because I feel like there will be a good drawn-out process. So we can have some good discussions about the positives of, of less congestion or the negatives of high-speed hazmat transport. Um, but then we can talk about the credentials that allow for, for trucks and drivers to be, uh, operating these vehicles in the first place.
If I can add on to that a little bit, one of the things that E four seventy has done as well is we've lowered rates during some of our off-peak times for trucks to encourage them to be on the roadway during off-peak times. I think that's from, uh, nine o'clock till noon. So given them a window, um, so that they are more likely to be out there during those non-peak times, which is a safer time for them to be out there. And then also, um, SEH wanted to point out, John Larson, he's an independent consultant that went through and did this, did this analysis.
Councilwoman Noble?
I wanted to go back to the fact that, uh, Councilmember Hurst mentioned that there would be increased traffic on E four seventy and, uh, in putting our residents first, that's what I'm looking at with this project. It is, uh, very concerning to me and I, I am especially worried about, uh, what they're carrying and at the speed that they're traveling. Yes, in northern Colorado, it's seventy-five miles an hour, but you do have to slow down. There's nothing making anyone slow down on E four seventy. You can just gun it the, the entire way because there aren't as many cars. And I am concerned also for our fire districts. We're in a very strange period right now where there are additional costs that, uh, we're all having to bear as government, um, uh, as governments. And, uh, this could be a higher expense than any of them have, uh, ex- thought about either, but I presume that will be taken care of later. What is the expectation of what we are to do tonight? It's just a presentation, correct?
Correct. Just seeing if you had any, any questions about the information. And if I can address one of the things you brought up, and as far as traffic, um, it's not a, if you will build, if you will create a hazmat route, they will come. It's more of you've got traffic going through the metro area now and where do you want them to go? Where is the safest route for them to go? That's really what that analysis looks like. So I understand we may increase the, the traffic on E four seventy, but then there'd be a corresponding decrease on one of the other hazmat roadways.
Well, I'm representing, um, my residents. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Uh, I have one question, uh, before I go back to Councilman Hurst. Uh, in your presentation, you noted that, uh, I seventy-six is currently a hazmat route?
Yes, it does show that on the presentation.
Okay, and I seventy-six bisects right through Ward three of Commerce City, runs right up there. And as soon as you get off of, uh, or past a hundred and fourth avenue, the speed limit there goes to seventy-five miles per hour. So we could effectively say that we already have hazardous material traveling through the city at seventy-five miles per hour.
Um, I haven't driven that, so I can't confirm that, but I trust you.
Uh, as someone who drives that route extensively, I can tell you that the speed limit does increase to seventy-five miles per hour as soon as you cross a hundred and fourth avenue. So thank you, uh, Councilman Hurst. You had more comments?
Yeah, so, um, Susan, I, I actually agree. You know, there, there's some increased traffic up in the, in the, uh, Ward four area. But I think my argument was, uh, because I, I consider that, you know, where do they get off if they're a hazmat company that needs to go down, um, a hundred and fourth or ninety-six, they already do. That, that, that's part of the route, um, the delivery route. So, um, the increase there would be very minor. Um, but the passing, the, the traffic that would pass us, either going north or south, um, could possibly be taken away from the, the core part of our city on I seventy-six, two seventy and seventy. And so I was, you know, to balance out some of that impact, I think it would actually be better to move it out east. So, um, that, that's just a perspective that I was trying to bring to that. Um, there is a potential vote at E four seventy. And all that vote would be is do we give permission to E four seventy to petition Colorado State Patrol to make this, to make it a hazmat route? Then Colorado State Patrol would accept the petition and spend a hundred and eighty days analyzing it. So then six months later, they would come back with an analysis after doing public meetings, so on and so forth. So I think as we leave here tonight, I would like to hear, have discussion. Do we want to push back our vote on this? Or do we want to vote, uh, how do you guys want me to vote at the next E four seventy? If it were to come up, it's not on the agenda yet, but it could come up if all, if all stakeholders have an answer for this.
Councilwoman Noble?
Uh, Craig, when, um, when trucks are coming through, one of the problems that we're having with a hundred and twentieth is that people get off at seventy-six, they cut through on a hundred and twentieth to get back onto four seventy. I could see, uh, because there is no intersection, there's no, uh, four seventy, seventy-six intersection going a particular, you know, going all directions, that a hundred and twentieth and maybe even a hundred and fourth would wind up seeing more activity because they would be moving off of seventy-six in order to get onto four seventy. What do you think of that? Do you think that would happen?
Like, like, uh, like was brought up, that's a nebulous question. It, it, it could obviously be a potential. But since we own the, uh, the, the hundred and twentieth corridor, we can make that a non-hazmat route and use signage um, on E four seventy that you can't use that route as a hazmat. It, if, you know, in the future, um, we want to make a hu, we make improvements to a hundred and twentieth, that sure would build, uh, the necessity of building an overpass over highway, highway eighty-five, if you have hazmat traffic traveling down that quarter. But I highly doubt a hundred and twentieth would be, uh, you can't legally utilize that at this point unless you have a delivery off of a hundred and twentieth. Uh, so unless there's new facilities come up a hundred and twentieth, that won't be a viable route and you can write tickets there all day if that happened. And those are, those are the actual, the tickets that come with a pretty heavy hand. Um, there are other tickets out there that aren't so heavy-handed. But the hazmat, uh, off-road ones will put a company on notice.
The only way I could support it would be if there is a speed limit and they're right lane only. And I know dual speed limits exist and I know that right lane onlys exist. So it may not be in Colorado, but that doesn't mean it can't happen.
Mayor Proton Frank?
Um, so I, I would support getting, getting these trucks on four seventy and kind of getting them out of our city and driving less in our city. Um, if, if I remember, there was a presentation a while ago that also talked about, um, that they had more safety, uh, like four seventy had more safety precautions in place and better ways to respond. Um, if there was an accident, a, a true hazmat accident, um, could one of you speak to that?
Sure, um, there isn't, uh, really, it's going to be the same people responding eat to E four seventy as it is to the other roadways because we have contracts with the different fire, um, companies. The one thing that is a little different is we do have some, um, individual contractors that if there is a spill, um, we can have them come out to help with cleanup. Um, so we do have that and we do have some overlapping areas also with the fire response to where there's actually more than one, uh, fire response that can get out there if there's an issue.
Okay, thank you. Um, so to, to, so my, my thought, Craig, I would support it. If, if you did get called to vote, I would support it.
Councilwoman Grimes?
Yeah, uh, Councilman Hurst also, uh, just would support this if it comes up at your E four seventy meeting.
Councilman Wadiola?
Yeah, Councilman Hurst, I think, uh, this is going to benefit the core city and the northern part. So I would support, um, this also. And, and I, I get what you're saying, uh, Councilwoman Noble about, but I think that's long-term thinking to get right lane and dual, uh, dual, uh, speed limits. But right now, we, we need to do what's best for right now. And so I would support it too, Councilman Hurst.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas?
Um, I agree. I would, um, support it. I just like it with Councilwoman, uh, Noble. I have a few safety concerns, but, you know, I agree with the majority. I would support it as well.
Councilman Hurst?
Yeah, I'm obviously in support of it. One thing I would like to, to mention too is that the CSP analysis to make this a, uh, a hazmat route, first, they're going to want all the stakeholders to have Biden. They're not going to want to be fighting a political battle or something behind this. So it'll be very well talked out. We could have this discussion in Brighton or Aurora, or somebody could shoot this down and the discussion goes away. Um, but the, the hundred and eighty-day analysis will allow for public feedback. We can address those concerns. One of the analysis, uh, areas that they do is are fire stations, do they have the appropriate equipment? They can use funds that come from hazmat transportation or permits to direct those funds to buy equipment for these fire stations that need it. I know it is a very, you know, drawn-out professional process that will be done correctly. Um, the, the State Patrol is a very good agency and they care about the reputation of doing it right. So I, I believe it would be done appropriately if we ask them to do it. So that's why I support it.
Don't see any other requests for, uh, comment. Does anybody wish to make a motion at this time? Mayor Proton?
Um, I'll motion for Councilman Hurst to take a vote of yes, if it comes up in the next meeting to support E four seventy as a hazmat route.
Remember Derek?
Yeah, maybe, um, this would be better done in administrative council business rather than presentations.
Mayor, you're muted.
Um, thank you. Actually, the, uh, script right here says under presentations, ask the council if there is a motion to take possession on the matter raised by E four seventy. So is there somebody that would like to second that motion that was already made? Councilwoman Smith?
I'll second the motion.
Uh, motion and a second to allow our E four seventy designated representative to enter a yes vote if this matter comes up at the next meeting. We'll go to discussion. Councilwoman Noble?
Yes, I'd like to know if, uh, the mayor pro champ and the council member would accept a motion to, um, add, would accept amendment to your motion for, um, every effort to be made to reduce the speed and, uh, Right lane for these folks only and any other safety measures that could be taken. Thank you.
Mayor Proton?
At this time, I'm going to agree with Councilman Guardiola, I, I'm not willing to make that amendment, I, I know that. We can push that going forward, but I think right now it's critical that we get these trucks off of the roads in Commerce City.
Councilman Hurst?
Sorry, I was, I raised my hand a second, I apologize.
Is there any other discussion? We have a motion and a second on the floor to allow our designated E four seventy representative to take a yes vote if this matter comes up. Before the council, it would be to have E four seventy explore the designation of E four seventy being a. Hazardous material route, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera? Councilmember Alan Thomas? Councilmember Noble? Councilmember Noble? Councilmember Wadiola? Councilmember Hurst? Councilmember Grimes? Councilmember Smith? Mayor Proton Frank? Mayor Hughesman? Passes eight to one.
Thank you. Thank you, E four seventy, for your time this evening and for the presentation. Next on the agenda is the city manager's financial update. Will Deputy City Manager Smith please provide the presentation?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. Dylan's going to pull the presentation up here. While he's doing that, Mr. McBroom talked to you all two weeks ago about providing you some updated financial information about. Alternatives that we have with respect to managing the COVID crisis, and this is that presentation. Next slide, please. Staff have developed a number of strategies that can be implemented over time and as needed by the city council. To address reductions in revenue, the need to address any emerging community issues. And to navigate a new economic frontier as a result of the pandemic. The nature of these strategies is reflective of the dynamic changing environment we currently find ourselves in. They can be scaled based upon the environment. A full financial and economic recovery could take longer than initially anticipated. Next slide, please. This is essentially a table of contents with some of the things that I will cover during the presentation, next slide. As the council has heard in prior presentations, our financial experts' initial revenue estimates were. Somewhere between ten and twenty-five million dollar decrease. Again, that data won't really get better for us until. We are into June with our tax receipts that come back from during the time the pandemic was going on. Next slide, please. Now, with the recreation centers and the outdoor pool closure for the season, we have experienced some cost savings. We also have not collected any revenue during the closures. We have about two hundred and forty part-time employees and about thirty full-time employees who are not able to work due to the closures. Or some form of emergency leave related to the COVID nineteen crisis. The regular court docket has been postponed until June third. And many city-sponsored events have had to be canceled as a result of the public health crisis. Next slide. With respect to public safety service delivery, the traffic and SRO units have been transferred back into patrol to mitigate impacts. High priority calls for service are slightly increasing. And response times as a result are increasing to just over eight minutes for priority calls for service. Traffic enforcement has been, this is reactivated, I would, I would say reinvigorated. With the number of speeding vehicle complaints that the police department has seen. Recently, they certainly have upped their traffic enforcement efforts along our major. Next slide, please. City staff are working in a combination of remote and onsite staffing functions to continue to deliver most services to residents. In spite of the facilities being closed to the public. There have been many significant adjustments developed to comply with the complex set of regulatory requirements. Contained within multiple public health orders and guidance from health experts. Adams County, as you know, has graciously agreed to share a portion of its direct federal funding with the municipalities within the county. Commerce City is anticipated to receive five million dollars in funding to direct COVID nineteen expenses. Taken positions have been frozen with a few limited exceptions and city out-of-town travel has been suspended. Next slide. Planned CIP projects are proceeding, there have been disruptions to progress as a result of COVID nineteen pandemic. While the municipal court docket is suspended until June third, we are running some trials in the courtroom. Trials have given us the opportunity to test several of our safety protocols. For safe operation under current restrictions and best safety practices. There are two liquor hearings set for this coming Wednesday in addition to a trial in the courtroom. One of those is for G's Tacos and the other is for La Casa Restaurant. We're attempting to get those hearings accomplished so that both of those restaurants can open. When it's safe to do so and the public health orders allow. We do have two, two recreation programs that will be starting. Here the first of June, one being the Licensed Summer Camp at Eagle Point. And the first T program at the Buffalo Run Golf. Thank you. As I mentioned before and Brian has in the past, revenue projections are uncertain. In an effort to determine a reasonable target, we have selected about the fifteen million dollar range for our projected shortfall. In modeling some of this financial analysis. This will continue to evolve as our financial team learns more information. Detailed plans have been drafted for a variety of limiting, limited reopening condition. These plans are fashioned in such a way that operations can be scaled up or down based upon current health regulations and pandemic activity. I anticipate these procedures will need to remain flexible as we learn more and the conditions in our environment change. The city has had several years of sound fiscal management, and as a result, our reserve accounts are healthy. Staff recommends a conservative approach to short, to the short term, given the possibility of a protracted recovery. Next slide, please. So there are resources available within our portfolio, which city council controls that can be leveraged and employed during this crisis. Staff recommends these transfers be reserved for the future as we learn more about our revenue collection. Using fund balance from any of our internal services funds would have an impact on our future. Next slide. The leadership team has spent a great deal of time analyzing the city's general fund budget to determine a variety of cost-saving measures. The approach taken was to evaluate operations and services. In each department and derive cuts that minimize impacts to residents wherever possible. There have already been very real impacts to the community as a result of this pandemic and the associated closures. Staff has identified ten million dollars in budget reductions that are possible. CIP funding up to three million dollars and transfers of up to seven million dollars to deal with shortfalls as they develop. The CARES Act funding I previously spoke of coming to us from Adams County cannot be used for expenses already budgeted in our twenty twenty budget. Said another way, the funding cannot be used as revenue replacement. Staff has worked to develop an IGA with Adams County to receive this funding. And a budget plan which identifies expenses already incurred or encumbered that are eligible expenses. And possible future expenses related to the crisis. We have launched the development of the twenty twenty-one budget recently. And it is very likely we will need to achieve a ten million dollar savings in twenty twenty-one in our operating expenses as well. Next slide, please. Recommendations include implementing the identified ten million dollars in cost reductions, continuing frozen positions with. City manager discretion to onboard only the most crucial positions. Consideration for furloughing non-working variable hour employees. Not planning a twenty twenty reappropriation process. Altering city council policy that requires a transfer of general fund dollars to the CIP for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Next slide, please. Staff have developed a number of strategies that can be implemented over time and as needed by the city council. To address these conditions I have described. The nature of these strategies is absolutely reflective of the dynamic environment we currently find ourselves in. And can be scaled by the city council based upon the environment. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions for staff at this time? Councilwoman Grimes?
Just curious, on the, the points on personnel and frozen positions and furloughed. Variable hour employees. If we would make an attempt to offer other. Work to those folks first before furloughing, it seems like maybe there are other places where they would be needed. Even though we're not opening the rec center at the moment, just for an example.
Yes, I think that pool of employees would be first eligible to compete for the positions that would be available in the city. At the variable hour rates. The identified positions that we have are those in parks maintenance, we do need to bring on some park, park maintenance folks. And we've also created an opportunity for those folks to help with our temperature screening stations at all of our city facilities, so yes.
And just as a follow-up to that, do you know offhand how many of our variable hour employees are also residents of Commerce City?
Yes, that data is included in the information that has been provided to us. I do not have it with me this evening, but it's something I could send out to the city council.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Noble?
Yes, thank you very much. Mr. Smith, so I'm curious, I, I feel like we've sort of gone from zero to sixty here. Because we haven't had a discussion about how. City facilities are going to go about reopening again, so we have this cluster of thirty children who are going to go to camp. But I'm not understanding why there isn't some method, some testing, experimenting method. For reopening the rec centers, for example, and putting some of these people to work or. Our, our seniors are eager to see friends again and do activities again. But certainly being compliant, whether it's masks or six feet apart or doing it outdoors. Nor have we heard what's going to be done inside of City Hall, for example, to protect residents. To protect defendants in municipal court and of course, to protect staff.
I'll attempt to answer your first question with respect to the summer camp, the reason that program is authorized to operate. Is because it is a licensed camp. Unlicensed daycares are not eligible to restart at this time, but because our camp is a licensed program. It is eligible to restart under guidance of the safer-at-home order. And as a result, staff worked to try to help create those opportunities for at least thirty children in our community. Who might not otherwise have childcare options. So the rec centers are required to remain closed under the safer-at-home guidance, it's not something that we're able to reopen at this point in time. Without a variance from the Colorado Department of Health and Environment. The kinds of procedures you're discussing, I would anticipate the city manager would bring back to you to discuss reopening plans for all of our operations. And reintegration of staff over a period of time and as that guidance becomes available, but as of today. That guidance has not been provided from the Colorado Department of Health.
And I did want to make one other point, I, I'm sure you talked about it, but we, we could just reemphasize it that. We were grateful to be able to provide hundreds of thousands of dollars to our small businesses in need as well as nonprofits. And that money did not come out of city coffers, that was through monies like the CARES Act. Is that correct? That's my understanding from Mr. McBroom.
Well, I actually have an update for the council and the community related to all of the grant funding in my COVID nineteen update. Which I will give to you here in, in a few moments. The money that was expended for these grants to this point in time has come out of the city's general fund budget. But it may be an eligible expense under the CARES Act for reimbursement to the general fund, we just don't know that yet at this time.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for your presentation. I just had a question like on slide thirteen where you said reductions in training and equipment. I just want to make sure that training doesn't backbone and impose the Commerce City Police Department. Will it, that's one question, and then also what type of equipment, when you said some equipment will be stopped? What type of equipment are we, are you referring to and will any of the, if we stop purchasing equipment? Will that stop the advancement of any staff employees?
Thank you.
So, yes, sure, I'll, I'll try to get, catch all three of those points. The training and. Adult learning experiences that are within the reductions have been taken from every department, including the police department. And we have done that in a way to allow the police department to manage meeting its training requirements. It is one of the few departments across the organization, there are some others, but one of the few departments that have state mandated training requirements. And the funding that they have will enable them to continue that. It does recognize though that personnel are all across the city are not traveling. Or professional development opportunities for conferences, just as the city council is not traveling for those things, so. Those reductions are not to zero in every department and they certainly are cognizant of skillsets that are required. To continue to operate, including the police departments. Your second question was about equipment, there is a variety of different equipment across each department's budget. For example, equipment needed to run the outdoor pool will not be procured this year because the pool is not opening. And so in each department's budget, different decisions were made by that department director as a recommendation to Mr. Tinklerberg and I. About those budget reductions, I believe the full budget detail is included in tonight's packet for you to have the opportunity to review. Where all of that funding was coming from.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hurst?
Thanks for the presentation, Troy, last, last minute, during the, during the hot spot.
Thanks for the presentation, Troy. Last last minute during the hot spot. Can we talk about the projected uses of the CARES Act five million? This is a personal opinion. The million dollars that we did for the grant. I wouldn't really even care to look to see if we need to reimburse it. I'm okay with our city using taxpayer dollars to to try to keep businesses afloat as best we can. So, but what are some ideas or what are some preliminary focuses that that five million dollars will be? First qualified for, but then we'd be looking to either reimburse or use moving forward.
There's some some interesting things about this IGA that begin to, I believe, start to answer some of your questions, Mr. Hurst. The IGA does require a complete drawdown on those funds by the end of this fiscal year. And as a result, addressing first in expenses is going to be very important to us as we work through this budget plan in detail. Our finance department has put together a list of potentially eligible expenses that we've already incurred. To apply this funding to, which I think will be very helpful in us addressing other budget shortfalls that we may have in other areas. In terms of what future things to expend this funding on, absolutely those expenditures will will. Are in the city council's purview and you all will have the opportunity to weigh in on those expenditures. It would be my guess as as those come in, they will be brought forward to the city council. For an appropriation consideration.
Thanks, sir.
Are there any other questions for Deputy City Manager Smith regarding the budget recommendations? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is an update on the city's response to the COVID nineteen crisis. Mr. Smith, the floor is still yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we have in the past, tonight, we do have updates from from staff members, key staff members, providing you an overview of our operations during the COVID nineteen crisis. And in just a moment, I'll be asking Mr. Sheasley to to start those updates. I wanted to point out today that during the governor's press release here in Colorado, he mentioned the draft guidance for restaurants will be released either late today. Or early tomorrow. I did not see them released prior to coming into the meeting tonight. But specifically, they'll be providing instructions on how restaurants can open, how they can operate and when they can reopen. And we've heard from another, a number of restaurateurs across the metropolitan area that if those restrictions. Were to contain capacity reductions beyond at or beyond fifty percent, that many restaurants simply would not be able to afford to open. It'll be critical to see in the coming days what that guidance looks like and the impact that it may have on our local business community. The governor did encourage cities to take action to expand outside dining options and he indicated that he is inclined. To waive pertinent regulations related to alcohol sales and service outside of the premise. We have an internal staff meeting tomorrow set up and I think Mr. Sheasley is going to address this in greater detail with you. But we we have already begun the discussions about how and what we might do to react to this information we received from the governor and how we might support our business community here in Commerce City. With that, I would ask the city attorney, Mr. Sheasley to take.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to give an update on the status of the various orders and where we are right now. As you all know, we're currently under the safer at home order. From Governor Polis that has and the public health order that the CDPHG has issued about two weeks ago. And it has been amended twice in two weeks. The most significant updates for our purposes are the indication that the items remaining closed were expanded to include pools. As well as amusement parks and arcades, but for us, the indication that pools were remaining closed for a longer period of time was a significant item. And then clarifying that certain matters that we already assumed were important enough to continue to operate. And had to continue were actually critical government functions. That included both state and municipal courts. And the general assembly and then municipal legislative bodies such as yourselves, as well as election operations. Which would include signature gatherers and circulators and then campaign workers. This weekend, we had a few executive orders come out that affect us as well. The primary one being the continuation of the face covering order that is mandatory for employees in critical businesses and performing critical government functions. So that is one that we are going to continue to operate with and work into our reopening plans as we go. The others were a few orders regarding elections where the governor was changing how signatures could be gathered for statewide petitions. That wouldn't affect anything we do. Really, it affects state ballot issues and candidate petitions. To allow electronic signatures. That has already been challenged. It's only Monday. That has already been challenged in a lawsuit filed, I believe, today. So we'll see how that shakes out. And then the last date that I wanted to mention, as Mr. Smith noted, we are working to create processes anticipating restaurants and other. And similar facilities like coffee shops. Being permitted to reopen but on a reduced capacity. It's difficult without knowing what the state rules are going to be until they get broadcast to the general public. I understand that the rules are going to be issued earlier for comment, and so hopefully that will give us the flexibility to plan how we can accommodate that. So that city council can take action and establish a program to get businesses like that operating as soon as possible should they choose to. One of the complicating factors is liquor licensing and we want to make sure that businesses can operate as much as they can in compliance with the state's orders. And so we believe we can have liquor licensing funneled through the city fairly easily. There were. Emergency rules issued by the state liquor enforcement division on Friday afternoon. That allowed temporary modifications to let people operate in parking lots. Green spaces, possibly on sidewalks and streets. There's a. Very dense list of where things can and cannot happen. And so we're going to be working through that to make sure that we can have a program set up very promptly. And we're working with that presuming city council would support that type of activity throughout the city. And so with that, I believe I'm handing that off to Chief Nichols at this point. Thank you.
Am I good to go, Dylan? Yes, I'm unmuted. Good evening, Mayor, Mr. City Council. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. The emergency operations center has been a quite a busy place, as you can imagine. For last week, a couple of items that we take great pride in, we assisted Adams County with delivering PPE gear to some of our local assisted living facilities. And all we delivered almost five thousand pieces of personal protective equipment to at least three facilities in Commerce City. To keep their staff as well as the residents there safe. I can tell you folks from the ELC actually went and visited a few of those communities since the residents are on lockdown and they were quite thrilled to have visitors come in. And even spend just thirty minutes with them. I know it was briefly mentioned, we are quickly working on some physical and technology modifications that are geared towards ultimately reopening. As DCM Smith mentioned, last week we had a practice run with the courts. We spent quite a considerable amount of time last week talking about what we did right and some things we can improve upon. And at the end of the day, as has already been, as has already previously been mentioned. We want to make sure that we want to keep visitors and staff safe and in compliance with public orders, so the community can get their business conducted in person. That's going to require us to make some modifications to the way we do things. We've procured some contracts for some new technology and currently we've done some modifications inside the business. Sneeze guards and some protective barriers in place to make it safe for everybody involved. In addition to that, we're taking a look at our security options to make sure that we can again keep folks safe so that they can physically distance themselves. And only have people in the building at the required minimum. As you can imagine, that's extremely difficult to do in a public facility, but we've got our best and brightest minds working on that to. Make that a reality and I'm confident we'll get that pulled off. I know it was previously mentioned about the reopening plan. We've had four or five drafts in place. One of the issues that we continue to run up against. As the city attorney mentioned is as the public health orders change, we have to change the way our plan works. So the key word is being agile and staying on top of things, reviewing those public orders for the information that is applicable to us and apply it. In the best way necessary. So again, that we can keep everybody safe. As it relates to the police department's operation, as has previously been mentioned. Our staffing levels are holding consistent. One of the things we did to manage the impact of the COVID nineteen challenges. Was to take our traffic unit and our SROs and put them back into patrol. And speaking with my deputy chief of operations, we have a plan in place to at least remove the traffic unit and put them back out on their motorcycles. If you haven't seen it lately, we've had our traffic radar, speed radar, so that we can get some traffic studies. And as you can imagine, speeds are considerably higher than the posted speed limits, which creates a challenge for us. Currently, we don't have any significant, we only got three significant traffic accidents with zero fatalities. But I would argue that is not due to, it is not undue to speed. It is probably related to lack of volume on the roadways. So as has previously been mentioned, my staff is going to be taking a directed approach on trying to reduce those speeds. By doing some significant engagement as well as enforcement to get people to slow down. We are continually continuing to respond to priority zeros and ones. I would argue most of the general public probably has not noticed that public safety has been too impacted by the COVID nineteen crisis. Outside of wearing face masks and on occasion asking residents to step outside in the open air to speak with us versus us going into their homes when it can be avoided. We are continuing to respond to resident concerns about public health order compliance as it relates to business. That's generating quite a significant call volume for us. My folks are going out having conversations with businesses, advising them of the public health orders. And then as appropriate, providing that information to Tri-County Health to take some enforcement actions should they deem necessary. And on that note, a feel-good moment for us, our SROs convinced my staff to participate in the Adams City High School graduation ceremony that occurred this past Saturday. As you are aware, they did not have an actual ceremony. So my staff got some of our members to. Give a little two-minute congratulatory speeches to them and we posted it on Twitter and on our LinkedIn page and so far it. Seems to have been pretty well received, so we were happy to do that with the graduates. And on that note, I don't have any other information to provide and I'll turn it over to Deputy City Manager Smith.
Thanks, Chief. Quick update from the internal services side of the house. Our finance department has three vacancies still that exist in the department. Eleven staff members have been impacted by school and daycare closures and twenty-one of our staff in the finance department are working the majority of the week in a remote situation. As you know, the audit began on April twentieth and over the next couple of weeks, staff will work with IBALELY by phone and email to finalize any last minute items. The CAFR presentation will be scheduled for city council's review. Once the CAFR is complete and we we have a date that we can select, we'll try to get that to you prior to July first if possible. And we do have eighty-four active audits in process. A reminder that the due date for April tax filings is June tenth and that's the day when we will. Get some good information relative to our anticipated revenues. Update for you on the Honan Building. McKinstry has finished the onsite assessment and the energy audit for the Honan Building. They've communicated that the final report should be delivered by the end of this week. Which would allow us to place this item on the agenda for the city council's consideration on June first. Our IT department has also completed an assessment of the IT infrastructure that would be needed to complete and connect the building to our network. That information will be included for city council's review on that same evening. Our facilities inspection deadline is July first, so we're well within that time period. And our title objection deadline is June first. Our city attorney is currently working with staff and the county on a few issues identified in this survey. Moving on to human resources, citywide, we have three hundred and sixty-nine full-time employees out of a total four hundred and one budgeted positions. Of two hundred and eighty-one VHE part-time and seasonal employees and thirty-seven vacant positions across the organization. During pay period ten, the most recent pay period that we have just completed, two hundred and forty-nine employees use some combination of. Work or COVID emergency leave. The HR department has continued to pursue pursue, even in our virtual environment, the opportunity for us to enhance employee recognition across the organization. And just this past week, we were presented with an online demonstration of a product that would assist us in not only managing. Employee recognition better once we return to the workplace, but it is an exceptional product that could help us in this virtual environment as well. From the municipal court side of things, we did hire a new municipal court supervisor and she started in that position today. In our IT department, over the last two weeks, eighty-nine service tickets have been opened. A year to date that takes us to almost twelve hundred service desk tickets that have been open. IT is researching a technology platform to have hybrid. Either council or public meetings in the future where some participants may be located remotely and others located physically on site. That's something today that we do not have the capacity to do. But we are exploring a number of potential technology fixes to be able to conduct business in that manner moving forward. IT has signed the contract with the vendor that will be providing the hardware and the software to enable mobile queuing and scheduling of folks. Which will be very important as part of our strategy when we reopen. And our ecomments portion of this meeting was actually a free trial from our vendor. Granicus and we've now purchased that product until the end of the year so that we can continue to receive ecomments from the public. Over the past two weeks, Planning Commission held a special meeting with twenty-nine participants. IT has to set those. Meetings up and register folks and and set them up as we discussed before. Cultural Council. Held a special meeting with fourteen participants and the oil and gas town hall had a total of one hundred and thirty-one participants. City Clerk's Office has received twenty-one CORA requests since we last met and twelve licensing applications. One hundred and sixty-nine of those licensing apps are either already issued or in process. I mentioned earlier that the courts did hold trial last week and there are two additional trials planned later this week. With respect to our grant programs, the city council authorized funding for nonprofits and local businesses through a recovery grant program. Business and nonprofits began applying for those grants on April twenty-ninth at eight AM and the application process closed on May fourth at five PM. The city received fifty-five business applications and eighteen nonprofit applications. Two hundred thousand dollars of funding was awarded to forty-four business applicants. And seventy-one thousand dollars of funding to fifteen nonprofit applicants. All applicants may apply for a second round of funding that will be announced later this month. City staff is meeting to determine the date for kickoff on those second round funding requests. The Colorado Enterprise Fund, the micro loan loan program was established on April twentieth as part of the COVID nineteen business relief effort. City council approved four hundred thousand dollars to fund that program. Program is a partnership with Adams County and the Colorado Enterprise Fund for small business loans up twenty-five thousand dollars. Eleven Commerce City companies have applied to date for that funding. Two of those loans have been approved. And seven applications are currently in the review process. Two of the companies have withdrawn their application. I would like to to add both Councilman Hearst and Councilman. and Councilwoman Noble asked questions relative to the expenditure of funds from the General Fund or from the CARES Act relative to these grant funding programs. Um and my answer may have been overly technical. I think the end result will likely be what you described. I believe these will be potentially eligible expenses for the CARES Act. And the CARES Act will reimburse the General Fund if they are eligible for the full amount of those expenditures. We just won't know that until we actually apply uh for that funding. And uh it is ultimately approved through both our IGA and with the federal guidance that comes with that funding. Uh the Communications Division has also developed a fact sheet for business guidance related to the Safer at Home order. Again, change constantly changing uh the guidance and the resources available for our businesses on our webpage. Uh the website traffic has changed a bit over the last two weeks with the Parks and Recreation homepage now being the secondly most frequently viewed page after the city's homepage. We've had over a thousand people view that page in the last two weeks. Um I would like to to share with council about our Memorial Day um promotion. Despite this year's parade consolation due to the COVID nineteen crisis, the city is still fun finding ways to honor our military personnel and this memorial. Staff will be placing a wreath at the Veterans Park site later this week, honoring the men and women who died while serving the United States Military from our community. Residents will also be encouraged to tune into Channel Eight on Memorial Day. The city will be streaming footage from the twenty-sixteen parade uh for that entire day. Look for promotions on Channel Eight and social media later this week. That concludes uh COVID update for the Internal Services Departments, and I would invite Deputy City Manager Tinklinburg to come to the floor for his now.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Uh start with just a little bit of an overview. As mentioned, uh obviously before, uh staff worked on budget reductions. And then uh there was a question uh late last week about uh trade dog management. Uh so I thought I'd just uh cover that a moment. Um the wildlife management plan was adopted by city council, and this particular animal management occurred in accordance with that plan. And uh that was attached to the presentation on April eighth uh twenty nineteen, and then again on August nineteenth twenty nineteen when council authorized the action. Uh also, animal management is a normal part of our routine operations that has to occur every year. Uh we get damage from a variety of different animals uh at different locations. And uh as a result, uh you know, that has to be taken care of to prevent uh additional extreme damage. Also, uh it was mentioned, uh staff vacancies, every external department uh has multiple staff vacancies. That's virtually every department in the city has that uh situation, so we're coping with that. And um Chief Nichols referenced the opening plan. Uh it's different for every facility, and uh the landscape keeps changing there, so uh staff continues to update as that goes on. Then uh turning specifically to community development, uh just again hitting a few of the high spots. Uh comprehensive plan update, uh there's going to be a a presentation and possible hearings scheduled for city council uh sometime in June, so they're they're working on that at this point. Uh Legato, which is the development uh project, used to be prime sites out next to E four seventy, actually between Tower and E four seventy. They're working on their water availability and uh are concerned about Pressure Zone Forty-One, which is a different pressure zone. And uh that pressure zone will require additional uh piping and equipment. So uh we are working with uh South Adams County Water and Sanitation District on updating plans for that and estimating uh whether uh or when that equipment can be installed. Um and then uh Buckley Crossing, uh for many years, nothing happened with that. That is uh next to E four seventy, north of a hundred and twelfth Avenue on up to a hundred and twentieth. Uh the Carlson family has ownership in that uh piece of ground. Uh they have become active here in recent months and uh are continuing to meet with staff uh regarding a possible PUD amendment. Um we continue to work with Reunion uh with Oakwood on uh, you know, some of the reunion projects and uh continue to problem-solve as issues arise. My Hall Mile High Greyhound site, uh the plat was approved after the property was posted with a deadline of uh May five. And uh now Kimberly Horn is working on their uh what's called property D two uh working on the plat for that property. And uh Dell West has submitted an an extension request. And uh so in uh later on in administrative council business, we'll pull you to see what date works for you in terms of uh meeting as the Urban Renewal Authority Board. Um there was a mention of oil and gas. Uh what I can tell you is that uh we will uh come to you with an update in terms of the LDC amendment. Uh either in a special uh remote study session on June eight or uh June fifteen, whichever one uh works out better, and and staff is working on that right now. In terms of process improvement, uh the community development staff continues to work on uh improving various operations and uh to give you an update in terms of development uh in process. So far in May, three new land use applications were taken in. Uh that compares to twelve that were taken in 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 all of April. So just in the first two weeks, we've taken in three, gives you a comparison. Um in terms of building safety, uh they're continuing with remote video inspections. And uh in the first two weeks, one thousand one hundred and eighty-nine building inspections were completed. Most of those uh on-site with new construction. And then in terms of uh, you know, significant projects, there's uh a construction of a ninety thousand ninety thousand square foot facility uh that will be happening on uh Quintero Street, and that's nearing approval. One zero seven one four Havana Street, uh there's a proposal for uh a little under a ten thousand square foot office shop. And then uh at uh fifty-four fifty Dahlia Street, and a proposal of a six thousand square foot addition to a repair shop. Um at uh one eight one two one eighty-first Street, there's uh ten thousand square foot of covered parking uh and a one point two, no, one thousand two hundred square foot uh fueling station that's uh near approval. And then uh at one seven 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 six eighty-fourth Avenue, so that would be just east of Tower Road. Uh three core and shell building permits for five hundred and sixty-four thousand square feet are under review and nearing approval at this point. Also at uh one oh eight two zero hundred and eighth Avenue, uh core and shell uh building application or building permit applications have come in. That's just east of Havana. And uh one building is sixty-four thousand square feet, second building is a hundred and twenty-one thousand square feet. And the third building is uh just under eighty-two thousand square feet. So a significant amount of uh development continues to happen. On the residential side, of course, there's uh residential single-family happening, and then uh also the Aspen Hill Apartments, uh which are is a combination of apartments and townhomes. Uh those are under various stages of review. Several buildings have been approved and uh several more are under review right now. Um for Neighborhood Services, uh CRMs are continuing to be monitored. And uh in the first week of June, Neighborhood Services will be transitioning to modified public engagement and enforcement for uh CRMs and notices of violations. That will be done in accordance with uh social distancing and and uh public safety. And then under uh CDBG, uh staff is negotiating with Maker Housing Partner on uh assigning the two hundred and forty-six thousand of supplemental uh appropriation that came through. And uh that would uh be able to support about one hundred uh Commerce City families with uh um mortgage and rental assistance. And then turning over to Parks Recreation Golf, uh they're getting ready to send out senior care packages, approximately three hundred that will be distributed on May twenty-eight. Uh the those will be distributed at the Eagle Point uh Recreation Center uh from nine AM till noon. And uh those care packages include uh things like playing cards, puzzle books, tissues, lotion, hand sanitizer, that type of thing. Um healthy places, uh there's uh Vive Wellness Fitness. And that's transitioning from onsite to online with uh twelve Spanish-speaking participants. And then uh as you may recall, we uh took on the August uh shutdown type of renovations at the two or improvements at the two recreation centers uh during this uh shutdown for COVID nineteen. And uh in Eagle Point, those involve uh painting of the gymnasium gymnasium ceiling and walls, painting of the netatorium ceiling and walls. Uh the pool was drained and sand was replaced in the pool filters, fire suppression update, uh refi- finishing the gymnasium floor, racquetball floors and uh fitness room floors. So uh a lot of updates that are going on there uh in terms of the uh Eagle Point Recreation Center. And then uh same thing at Bison Ridge, uh gym gymnasium floors were uh refinished and uh fitness room floor, and then uh cleaned out the drains in the locker rooms uh and doing the normal annual shutdown type of cleaning, uh where tables, chairs, uh all of that type of thing, reupholstering weight equipment, deep cleaning, all that type of thing happens during those uh shutdown periods. So that way, we will not have to shut down in August. Uh and hopefully, uh we will be able to uh have health orders that will allow us to start gradually reopening those facilities. And uh staff have been working on reopening plans that uh you know, will enable us to be able to keep the public safe and employees safe. In terms of uh youth licensed youth camp, uh there was a reference to that. That starts at Eagle Point on June one with thirty weekly participants. Um and again, that is proving to be a good trial run for uh the other possible openings that uh can occur later because staff have to think through all of the different protocols for uh keeping the kids safe, sanitizing the equipment, all of that type of thing. And and every one of those requires a different set of protocols because of different equipment, so uh it's helping them to uh think through how to do all of that. And there's, there'll be about thirteen VHE staff that'll be working with that camp throughout the summer. In terms of uh Buffalo Run Golf Course, uh that opened on April twenty-seventh, and now through uh May fifteen, there have been two thousand five hundred and eighty-nine rounds of golf played. And uh so that has provided an outlet for some people. On May four, staff started providing limited food and beverage service. Uh primarily prepaid snacks, prepackaged snacks, I'm sorry, and cans and bottles of beverage. Um and then also started expanding golf service, including putting green and that type of thing. And then May eleven, they uh expanded the food and beverage service again to include hot dogs, brats, sandwiches, chips. And then uh May twenty-two, they anticipate expanding the golf service to include carts and uh push-pull carts. And again, every stage has been a gradual iteration as staff worked out protocols for maintaining uh uh helping the customers maintain social distancing and also uh making sure that the cleaning sanitizing protocols are in place. And so uh May twenty-three, they're anticipating another expansion, and that would be for a uh tournament. Uh but no social before or after. And then uh again, uh June one, uh expanding it to include a junior program, which would be the uh first key that's done in cooperation with Green Valley Ranch. And then uh anything beyond that, uh you know, particularly past May twenty-five, is going to be subject to whatever health guideline update comes from the state. And then moving on to Public Works, um again, uh various projects I'll run through. Uh Seventy-second in Colorado, they uh paved the top lift of asphalt, uh that was done yesterday, actually. Uh eighty-eighth Avenue, uh I think I mentioned before that they've shifted to widening versus a flyover over the railroad track and uh O'Brien Canal. And then uh Hundred and Twentieth Avenue and US eighty-five, they had a conversation with CDOT. Presently, the right-of-way acquisition phase cannot begin without uh Federal Highway Administration approval. And uh that's scheduled for uh fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Um and then also, they met with CDOT, and uh CDOT said they would honor the prior eight million dollar commitment, but they will not serve as a principal sponsor for an additional grant application for that project uh because of other priorities in the state. So that one remains a large question mark. Uh VASGAS improvements, uh there's an update that will be coming to you in memo form regarding uh CDOT's uh conclusions after the open houses and uh getting the prior city council feedback that we provided to them. Uh was that a month or two ago that that you met on that? Um Hundred and Fourth Avenue Signals, work continues there. Revere is completed, I'm told. Uh Florence is waiting on uh CDOT to finish their controller bench test. And then uh Joliet is pending a back order on the cabinet controller. Peoria and E four seventy, those two are uh um waiting on steel delivery, which is estimated to be the end of September. Moving on to a hundred or uh the twenty-twenty pavement management plan and flatwork, uh that is on the agenda tonight for approval by council, action by council. And then uh moving on to Hundred and Twelfth Avenue's Chambers to Parkside, the work continues there. And that uh full closure into the greens at Buffalo Run will be in place for another couple weeks. Um that pretty well covers most everything. Uh so again, if if there's questions, I'm certainly happy to answer them. I'll turn it back over to Troy if there's no questions.
Any questions at this time for staff? Councilwoman Grimes?
Yeah, thank you for the update, Roger. Um just curious, the transition that exists on Chambers right now due to the work um headed towards Parkside, um they've switched it to a steel. Um it's like a steel plate across the road to cover where they've dug, and it's a pretty harsh transition. Um there's a a little bit of a notice, but not much, and um gives you a pretty good jolt when you go over top of it. So I don't know if there's any way we can extend the lead on that notice, um or if there's a way to to smooth that transition a little bit, but that would be, that would be helpful.
So a quick question as a follow-up, is the uh steel plate on Chambers itself or on Hundred and Twelfth?
Yeah, it's on Chambers right at a hundred and twelve.
Okay, we'll pass that on to Public Works and uh have them take a look at it. Thank you.
Thanks, Roger.
Councilwoman Noble?
And I'm glad there's at least a plate. We managed to hit the hole yesterday. Before, there was a plate in place. A resident has uh expressed concern about all of the dust from uh construction on a hundred and twelfth in that area uh developments that are going in and so forth. Do we have any regulations regarding tamping down dust? Are developers expected to uh keep dust to a minimum or not at all, or however it works?
Yes, sir. Yes, there is a regulation on that. Um, right now, one of the vacant positions is our uh stormwater coordinator, which uh that position handles uh fugitive dust as well as uh silt and that type of thing. So we will have one of the other staff members reach out and and get with them about uh mitigating that dust.
That will be good because they're having me come out and uh see it for myself tomorrow morning. So I am, thank you.
Councilwoman Grimes?
Thank you, Mayor. Um Roger, just one more question. Um, I was reminded while we were talking talking there um about some cones that have been put in place on Chambers near the new developments at Hundred and Fourth. And it looks like we've created a new left-hand turn when you're coming south to get into the development where um Dutch Brothers and State House, where all of those establishments are, but that turn lane is coned off. Do we know why?
The road in that property is closed at this time, and so they don't want anybody turning into the barriers that are put up.
Okay, fair enough. It just looks funny from Chambers. Thank you.
Councilman Hurst?
Yeah, thanks for the update. Uh to the city managers, uh W C managers and the chief, um you know, I appreciate the 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 steps that were taken way back in December and January to uh prepare the city for the pandemic. Um, and and really, I want to say good job handling it, working within the multiple different layers of health orders, um confusing, ever-changing, you know, as the chief said, very, the need for very agile plans. I I would just want to encourage continuing, um you know, the customer support role of being forward-thinking on how we can safely reopen as much as possible. There is a fine balance um that we're all trying to learn and manage, completely understandable, um but just encouraging. Uh you know, it's encouraging to see that the the golf course staff has started to figure out ways to slowly bring that back. Um, it's encouraging to hear there's plans in place depending on what health quarter uh health orders come out for um reopening of the the fitness centers or the community centers. I encourage, you know, us to be the leader, you know, our our emergency ops manager was the leader on on developing the plan to deal with the COVID. And I just want to continue to encourage us to be the leader on developing the plan to reopen. Um, and and so I applaud what has been done already. Uh, this is in no way to knock that. Um, but just an encouragement to um use that forward-thinking uh thought processes that established the response that the city was able to accomplish at the beginning. Use those same thought processes to establish the appropriate and safe way to get us out of this uh effectively, but efficiently as well.
Thank you.
Any other comments at this time? All right, well, thank you to all of you for the update. I appreciate the uh constant information that is flowing on our response to it and appreciate you guys taking the time to be as comprehensive as you are. Uh next on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine procedural informational self-explanatory and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of the council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are ten items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to remove an item off the consent agenda for further discussion? Councilwoman Noble?
Yes, I'd like to uh remove the May fourth minutes, please.
Okay, I'd like to remove the May fourth minutes. Any other uh requests to remove an item off of the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I would like to also pull item two zero two zero dash one zero off the consent agenda, and we will discuss that separately. So I have two items, the May fourth amendments and the twenty-twenty dash ten resolution for the Flatworth Construction Project. Outside of those two items, I'm looking for a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Councilwoman Grimes?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, um taking out the May fourth minutes and the uh the twenty-twenty dash ten uh resolution.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified. Uh Councilwoman Noble?
Second that motion?
I have a motion in a second to approve the council, the consent agenda as modified, which is removing May fourth minutes and resolution two zero two zero dash one zero. Is there any discussion? Councilman Hurst?
No, sir. That was uh just a second. Apologize, I should have put down.
All right, seeing no discussion, I asked City Clerk to read the titles.
Minutes of March second, twenty twenty, minutes of March thirteen, twenty twenty special meeting, minutes of the March sixteenth, twenty twenty special meeting, minutes of the March twenty-third, twenty twenty special meeting, minutes of the April sixth, twenty twenty special meeting, minutes of April twenty, twenty twenty. Uh, resolution twenty twenty dash zero nine, resolution authorizing award contract for twenty twenty asphalt melon overlay project at Lee's Service Infrastructure RME L T D O L C. And resolution twenty twenty dash twelve, resolution authorizing award of contract for preliminary and final design of two bridges located at Potomac Street and O'Brien Canal and Peoria Street and Burlington Dish Award Project to Alfred Vinich and Company.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion in a second. The titles have been read. We'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, nine to zero.
Thank you. So we have two items that were moved off consent agenda. The first is the May fourth minutes. Councilwoman Noble, you requested that to be removed. Please address why.
Oh, uh, the last time I did minutes, I was told I didn't have to uh explain anything about it, that I could just deal with it off to the side in order to make the um discuss the corrections. I don't have the minutes sitting in front of me right now, so I am uh confused.
Um, this is your opportunity to make those, to request those corrections to the item.
No, Ben, previously I was told to do it separately with those who um with with the, because the minutes will come back to us and you will know what the change was. That I don't need to do it during the meeting. That was what was discussed when I had an issue with the previous uh minutes. Oh, good. Thank you, City Attorney Sheasley. What is?
I am, I am listening, even if I'm not not seen. Um. The mayor's correct. This would be the opportunity to make the correction. I believe last time you'd indicated um a request for a correction, and there were some other items that we wanted to fix as well. And um so we did bring those back um and tried to take in what the specific correction that was requested was for council to consider. If you don't have the corrections available tonight, uh an an option is to move to continue these minutes until the next meeting, when you can then propose those changes. Um, I think that would shorthand solve the issue.
I think that's a wonderful idea, and and they aren't, they aren't like major philosophical issues. I just don't have it in front of me in order to present the case, but I would appreciate if we can postpone to the following meeting and and I will have the minutes in front of me. I'm sorry for misunderstanding what had occurred previously. Thank you.
Are you making a motion?
If it needs to be a motion, I will make it a motion to uh continue the minutes to the next meeting of May fourth, twenty twenty.
A motion on the table to continue the approval of the minutes of the May fourth city council meeting. Is there a second? Councilman Wardiola?
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion in a second to continue the May fourth, twenty twenty city council meeting minutes. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, nine to zero.
Thank you. That'll be carried. Um, somebody can reach out to Councilwoman Noble and find out what changes she would like to see on the meeting minutes. Um, I have requested to pull resolution two zero two zero dash one zero from the consent agenda. That is for the Flatworth project, uh Flatwork Project. Reason why I requested that is because on April uh fourteenth, Public Works said that they would repair a sidewalk at the address of one five four nine one East Hundred and Thirteenth Avenue under the Flatwork Project. Yet, looking at the example that was provided in our packet, I do not see that address listed on there. So can somebody answer to me why that address was not included on the program?
I have unmuted uh Brent and Joe Wilson in Public Works. Brent and Joe, uh you should be unmuted.
Like they're still muted?
This is uh Brent Soderland, the city engineer. Can you, can you guys hear me now? Can the city council hear me now?
We can, Brent, yes.
Okay, uh, so what we'll do is we'll change order that little piece of sidewalk into the Flatwork Contract, and we'll take care of it. Um, uh, when we prepared this uh presentation, it was, I believe it was before that request was put in, but we will change order that piece of sidewalk sidewalk into the the Flatwork Contract.
Thank you. That's the case. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution two zero two zero dash one zero with the inclusion of work to be performed at one five four nine one East Hundred and Thirteenth Avenue. Councilman Hurst?
I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second on the table to approve resolution two zero two zero dash one zero with the inclusion of one five four nine one East Hundred and Thirteenth Avenue. Is there any discussion? We'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
I'm sorry, can I stop you there?
Yes.
City Clerk, would you please read the title first?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Thank you. Uh, that is resolution two zero two zero dash one zero, resolution awarding twenty twenty concrete flatwork replacement repair project to Silver Construction Incorporated.
Proceed with roll call vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes, sorry.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, nine to zero.
Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is the public hearing portion of our evening. Uh, first up is conditional use permit one zero eight dash one five dash two zero. Will the city attorney please explain how tonight's public hearing via Zoom will be conducted?
Thank you, Mayor Hughesman and council members. Um, tonight's hearing will be conducted just like any other public hearing uh with the same conditions and restrictions, except for doing it by Zoom. This is our first effort at doing a quasi judicial hearing electronically. So just as a reminder, this is a quasi judicial hearing, so this requires the application of the facts we developed during the hearing to the criteria for a conditional use permit. Please use the hearing to develop that, those facts by asking questions as opposed to testifying. Um, and because this is a remote public hearing, we're trying to pay special attention to due process issues uh pursuant to resolution twenty twenty dash thirty that you approved in April. Um, the notices for this hearing included advisement of registration requirements for testimony and advanced publication of the packet. Um, the city clerk will identify if there were any uh people who registered to testify. I don't believe there were. But please um be on the lookout for computer hiccups you have if you can't hear testimony, or if anything is presented on the screen that you can't see. Please raise that uh to be addressed because we want to make sure everybody has uh the uh the record information in front of them. And how well this goes will determine how well we can do these um for however long this may continue into the future. So uh I will be here if there are any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheasley. Uh, tonight's public hearing is a conditional use permit for RCI Investments LLC's metal recycling business. And it's been said before, but I remind council to use the public hearing only to ask questions, but not to express opinions or indicate how you will vote. Council members are not to provide testimony if they wish to participate in the decision. Also rely only on facts developed in this hearing and in the record and apply those facts to the criterion in the land development code. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Will Mr. Jason Rogers, Director of Community Development, please make the presentation?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Dylan, if you don't mind pulling up or queuing up the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Uh, next slide, please, Dylan. So very quickly on this side, uh the condition use permit that's before you tonight is an existing business for a metal recycling facility. As you can see on the vicinity map, uh the property is located at the northeast corner of Hundred and Fourth in Florence Street. Um, for your knowledge as well, uh the property is zoned I three, which requires recycling facilities to uh request a C U P when looking at either a new operation or expanding an existing one. Next slide, please, Dylan. Uh, this slide is of the comp plan land use designation, which calls out general industrial. Uh, general industrial encourages a mix of medium intensive to heavy industrial uses, which the existing land use is consistent with. Next slide, Dylan. Um, as noted earlier, uh RCI, which is the applicant, uh is an existing business, which was annexed into the city in two thousand and seven. Uh, when annexed and zoned in two thousand and seven, it was allowed to operate as a legal non-conforming use from the time of the annexation to receiving its initial C U P approval in twenty fifteen. In twenty fifteen, the need for the C U P was to accommodate a request to expand its operations onto an adjoining lot to the east and to the north. Uh, the C U P at that time contained a limited duration condition that would require to come back before city council boards renew. On top of that, RCI to this point has satisfied the conditions from that twenty fifteen approval uh and are not proposing any changes to the operations or site improvements. Dylan, next slide. So very briefly, this slide and Dylan, the next slide. And the following side are photos that were taken in the fall and spring of twenty nineteen to demonstrate the various improvements that were required of the C U P back in twenty fifteen from the approved landscape plan and demonstrating their compliance and maintenance and upkeep of set improvements. Next slide, please. This slide is of the approved site plan uh that was dated back in twenty fifteen, which has remained in effect in operation to this day. Uh, staff has verified that the location of proposed operations, shipping, staging, processing is still uh in, is still operating under today's conditions. Uh, next slide, please. Um, information we share, we believe, is proven consideration of the renewal was presented to PC and is followed. Uh, there have been no complaints or service calls by either N S or P D staff. Uh, the Florence Street access was improved, and obviously there is a traffic signal that will be fully operational in the near future to mitigate any potential traffic impacts. Uh, South Ames County Fire District, which is located directly to the north of the site, has no concerns with the existing operation or use. And lastly, RCI is willing to replace any site landscaping or improvements um to continue to be a good neighbor to adjoining land uses. Uh, next slide. Uh, that being said, uh staff is proposing the same conditions from twenty fifteen with the exception of a five-year expiration versus a three-year expiration, which is common practice for you, for C U P renewals. Next slide. Um, obviously, the city attorney, Mr. Robert Sheasley, noted prior to opening the public Obviously, the city attorney, Mr. Robert Sheasley, noted prior to opening the public hearing, but just very quickly did want to note that the land use applicant wasn't posted in, of course, with our requirements under the land development code additionally to the points that were identified within Resolution twenty twenty thirty to permit quasi judicial hearings before city council consideration. Next slide, please. So to that, once again, at the PC hearing that was held on March third, Plan Commission voted five oh two for approval to city council, subject to four conditions. One, that is the expiration of December thirty one twenty twenty five, that gets to a five-year expiration of, in the need of a renewal. Next slide, Dylan. The materials accepted for recycling will be limited to those outlined in Exhibit A, the material list. The material list was one that was generated by the applicant and is the material list that is also approved with the twenty fifteen CUP approval. Whole crush cars can be stored on the site for no longer than seventy-two hours. No vehicle crushing will be allowed to occur on the site, and no storage of inoperable vehicles will be permitted. Once again, this is in accordance and compliance and conformance with what was approved in twenty fifteen. Last slide, Dylan. And then the applicant shall notify the community development department in writing if recycling facilities ever discontinue by Recycling Connections Incorporated or RCI. And once again, this is consistent with the twenty fifteen approval. Next slide, please. So staff is here and available to answer any questions that you may have in regards to the application before you tonight. The applicant, I believe, is also present to speak on their behalf if there are any questions that you may have in regards to their operations and or use. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. This time, is there any questions for staff? Seeing none, I do have one question. You indicated a traffic light. Can you further expand upon where that traffic light is located?
That traffic light is at the location of Florence Street and Hundred and Fourth intersection.
And did you say that the applicant is helping to fund that traffic light?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. I thought that's what I heard you say. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Anybody have any questions for the applicant? Mr. City Clerk, is anybody registered to speak on this matter?
No members of the public registered to speak, and no written comments were submitted by the deadline for this item.
Thank you very much. Seeing no request for comments, did the applicant wish to address the council?
Good evening. Hope everyone can hear me. I'm Ryan McBreen with Norris Design. Appreciate staff's presentation and all it did to help us get to this point. We have nothing further to add, but are happy to answer any questions you might have with us. The the owner of the property is is also listening on the phone as well, if you all need to speak with him. So thank you for everything tonight.
Thanks, sir. One last time, does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. This time, I'm looking for a motion and a second to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. Councilman Hurst? Like to make a motion to accept the findings and the recommendations of the Planning Commission, I'm sorry. Think you have a motion to accept this findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. Looking for a second, Councilman Madera?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes unanimously nine to zero.
Thank you. This time, I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve conditional use permit CUP dash one zero eight dash one five dash two zero. Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Motion to approve a conditional use permit CUP one oh eight dash one five dash two zero.
Councilman Wardiola? Oh, sorry, I thought you had your hand up.
I'll second.
Okay, great. Have a motion and a second to approve conditional use permit CUP one zero eight dash one five two zero. Is there any discussion? Councilman Hurst?
I apologize, I do not have discussion.
Councilman Madera?
Yeah, is this including the conditions recommended by the Planning Commission?
Mr. Attorney?
Yes, it does. The document that is in the packet is the conditional use permit that includes the four conditions, as I understand it, Mr. Rogers would correct me. I'm wrong.
That is correct.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, I have a motion and a second to approve conditional use permit CUP dash one zero eight dash one five dash two zero. We'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes unanimously nine to zero.
Thank you. For the record, the conditional use permit one zero eight dash one five dash two zero for RCI Investments is approved. Next on the agenda is ordinances on first reading. First up is ordinance two two six eight for weeds and grass code updates. This item was continued from the May fourth twenty twenty meeting. Public and written comments were heard during citizen communication. This time, I'd like Community Development Director Jason Rogers to provide an update on the ordinance.
Thank you once again, Mayor and City Council. To recap, as you stated, this is a continuation from the first reading on the weeds prevention ordinance that was initially heard by council on May four. At that meeting, council requested that staff reach back out to the large lot property owners at A M O, to the four that provided responses during study session conversations that occurred in May and October of last year. Staff reached back out to the four, and at the last meeting, staff misspoke about five, so I wanted to clarify that we had received at least three written responses in regards to the proposed draft. The written responses have been provided in the packet for your review. I would say staff will not go through each comment, however, the theme of the comments can be broken down into the following categories. There needs to be an exception for farming or normal farming operations. Concern of a potential maintenance cost of impact to the city's storm sewer systems and related maintenance heights, we will see spread throughout the three letters between sixteen and eight inches of of maintenance and or abatement. Two point number one, it was deliberated internally by staff if an explicit exemption or exception for agricultural land uses needed to be included. However, given the specific identification of that use within the land development code, we didn't believe one was necessary. In allowing an agricultural land use, we understand that there are some inherent operations related to growing, following, and tilling of land. Which then obviously, once again, is in support of their use in being able to utilize the land for those purposes. That being said, staff is not opposed to a consideration of an exception if that is council's position. Number two, in regards to potential maintenance cost impact, at this time, there's not a significant concern in regards to the impact by the city as it relates to, I'll say, the maintenance cost within our storm sewer systems. Number three, and lastly, in regards to maintenance height of eight inches versus sixteen inches, the eight inches is only in reference to weeds or grasses adjacent to the right of way or within what we've defined as the extended property. Eight has always been the expectation within the extended property since twenty twelve. The ordinance explicitly captures this expectation in a regulatory framework for perimeter cut or anywhere else within the property. For what we have now kind of identified as the larger lots in the existing code that we have today, which is one, the five, and five plus have merged them together, they are required to maintain a sixteen inch limit. For lots that were one to five acres in the in the existing code, it's sixteen inches across the board. For lots that are greater than five acres, it was a perimeter cut within twenty feet of the edge of the right of way. And having to keep that at sixteen inches and no height limitation anywhere else on the site. So in essence, the new code still maintains the existing language outside of shifting the larger lots of five acres or higher to having sixteen across the board as well. I would also like to note that the interior lot maintenance, once again, getting outside of that perimeter cut, there was a deliberation by council at last year's study sessions of sixteen versus twenty-four inches. And the direction that staff had received at the time was to develop an ordinance with the intent of sixteen inches across the board for consistency purposes. With that being said, staff is here to answer any questions that you may have in regards to this item.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. At this time, are there any questions for staff? Councilman Hurst? Yeah, thank you for the clarification, Director Rogers. Up. Do we update on how many times Neighborhood Services has issued warnings or notifications to current property owners under the current regulation?
Yes, sir. So as of twenty nineteen, for the year of twenty nineteen, for, I'll say, residential lots, we issued one thousand two hundred and fifty-three notices for either, for lots that were less than one acre. And we had forty-eight abatements of those noted violations. For lots one to five acres, we had sixty-one citations or violations and seven abatements. For what we've identified as the five acre plus, we had sixty violations with twenty-two abatements. And that is for the calendar year of twenty nineteen.
Yes, I guess, you know, my comments on what's happened and why we got here really revolve around, obviously, we're looking for voluntary compliance, but you can hear in the concerns that were presented in the written responses or comments that you know, we need to make an exception, there needs to be an exception, and I understand that. The the problem is where do our exceptions lie? And so if we're going to have some exceptions, the farming one makes, as defined in the letter we received, the farming one makes complete sense. So I would support that type of exception. But if we start getting into, or land exchanges, and in the next ninety days is going to start some some development, and the dirt work is going to begin. Okay, as long as that's in writing and we hold them accountable to that. Having that flexibility and that customer service mindset should still be incorporated in this in this moving forward, because I think the intent of this rule that we've gone back several months on this, or even all the way to last year, is really for, you know, out of state property owners that have large, large swaths of land that don't have to deal with the eyesore, if you will, of and possibly even fire danger and everything else that comes with unmaintained land. So I think finding the correct balance of, you know, what is acceptable and what we can work with is really my goal with this. It's not to be to lay down the hammer in every situation, but as long as we find some enforcement flexibility and the willingness to work with the community on solutions as presented to us, I would support moving forward with this. Thank you. Are there any other questions for staff? Seeing no other questions, I do have a question concerning Mr. Murray's concerns. He reached out to me last week. Mr. Tinkleburg and you had a conversation with him, and then he reached out to me again over concerns of his requirement to have to mow in the ditches and on grades and embankments and things like that and maintaining the public right of way. Can you speak to that, please? Here on mute.
Thank you, Dylan. So, thank you, Mayor. To that, yes, in the requirement with having to mow the extended property or the land adjacent to the public right of way, a property owner has a number of options available to themselves. They can either do themselves with equipment that they have in order to be able to perform that, or they have the ability to contract with a private contractor or landscape contractor in order to be able to perform that level of maintenance on their behalf with this. So there is flexible option for them to be able to move that mowing forward outside of themselves.
As of today, is he currently required to do that mowing?
He is, the except, the expectation has always been for the private property owner to maintain the adjacent right of way. Once again, this ordinance provides clarification to that expectation explicitly. And we have tried to work with, I'll say, a number of property owners with that expectation, and obviously, we get pushback. So in understanding that, we thought it was best to make that clear for all parties involved. Hence, the main, the requirement to maintain and the duty to maintain, and whose responsibility that is.
Okay. I personally would like to see that section of this ordinance removed, and I think that needs to be taken up on a separate matter. I think that we're compounding two different issues that are going on from one issue being the lack of maintenance taking place on property that is undeveloped and currently sitting agriculturally zoned or PUD zoned, but no development taking place and no current farming operations, and another of trying to enforce public right of way maintenance upon individuals. I think that that's completely two different things, and I'm disappointed that we're putting both of those issues into the same exact ordinance, so for purposes, I would like to see that removed from this ordinance, and we take that up at a later time and figure out what the proper way is to have these businesses that have that right of way, especially on undeveloped land. I can understand undeveloped land where you have curb and gutter, and you have a sidewalk, and you have, you know, a tree lawn or whatever it is that's sitting out there, the same thing we as homeowners have to deal with. But when we're talking undevelopment land and embankments and ditches and things like that, and that requirement to develop, to maintain that, I think that's a completely different thing, so that is my preference. Seeing no other questions from staff, is anybody wanting to make a motion? Mayor Pro Tim Frank?
Okay, so I, sorry, I'm trying to work from two screens. I will motion. All right, I'll motion to approve ordinance two two six eight on first reading with the exception of what you just talked about being pulled out of that ordinance.
I have a motion to approve ordinance two two six eight weeds and grass code updates with an amendment to pull out the requirement or the language clarification that was inserted regarding the maintenance of right of way. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Hughesman. When we're dealing with passing an ordinance in a code section, we have to be very specific about the language that we would want to remove with an amendment. If that's not identified, we wouldn't be able to determine what the actual code section would be and what the code would look like at the end of it, so I'm trying to think of a alternate way. So I'm trying to think of an alternate way to do it. Which language would be struck here specifically? I am assuming you mean from Exhibit B. And so you'd have to identify what language there or to continue this item and to direct staff to bring this back with removal of that concept. Because I believe that that language is, that obligation is, is affects multiple parts of the document.
I would agree with that, Robert.
So if you'd be amenable to moving to continue it, if that's the desire and bring it back, otherwise, we could do that.
Mayor Pro Tem, you have the motion?
Yeah, I would motion to continue this to to work on those changes.
Motion to continue to June 1st, 2020. Councilmember Madera?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue this item until June 1st, 2020. Is there any discussion? Councilman Hurst?
I was looking to second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? We will take a roll call vote.
Member Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, nine to zero.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody, for that. We'll move on to the next ordinance, which is ordinance 2277, recognition of, excuse me. Both those ordinance have the same number, okay? Ordinance 2277, recognition of National League of Cities Census Rapid Response Grant. Are there any questions from city council staff regarding this ordinance? Seeing no request for discussion, no one registered to provide public comment, no written comment were submitted. Looking for a motion and a second to introduce and approve ordinance 2277 on first reading by council seated. Councilman Hurst?
Finding it again. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2277 on first reading.
Councilwoman Allen Thomas?
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 2277, recognition of National League of Cities Census Rapid Response Grant. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, will the city clerk please read the title?
Ordinance 2277, an ordinance amending the 2020 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the National League of Cities Census Rapid Response Grant Program in the amount of $9,400 and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
A motion and a second. The city clerk has read the title. We'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst? Councilmember Hurst lose connection, or can I not find him?
I don't see him on the screen anymore. Looks like he lost connection.
City Attorney, should we just, oh, there he is. Councilmember Hurst?
Yes. I got booted, sorry.
You're okay. Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, nine to zero. And for the record, the next ordinance is 2278. My apologies.
No problem, got it. Thank you. Next on the agenda is ordinance 2278, recognition of Colorado Auto Theft Prevention Authority Grant. Is there anybody on city council has any questions regarding this ordinance? Councilman Hurst?
Looking for a motion to approve.
Okay, well, I'm looking to see if anybody has any questions on this.
Don't think I.
No one registered to provide public comment, no written comments were submitted at this time. Looking for a motion and second to introduce an ordinance 2278 on first reading by council seated. Mayor Pro Tem Frank?
Hold on. A motion to introduce and approve ordinance 2278 on first reading by council seated.
Councilwoman Allen Thomas?
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to introduce and approve ordinance 2278 on first reading by council seated. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, will the city clerk please read the title?
Ordinance 2278, ordinance amending the 2020 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Colorado Auto Theft Prevention Authority Grant Program in the amount of $200,000 and the authorization of the expenditure thereof and.
I have a motion and a second. The title has been read. We'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes, and Mr. Mayor, I need to step away after this vote.
We'll take a quick recess after this vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, nine to zero.
Thank you. This time, we'll take a five-minute recess or six-minute recess. Be back, please, at 8:45 PM. Councilwoman Smith, are you back? Thank you. Councilwoman Grimes, are you back? All right, we're at almost ten minutes on the recess. We'll go ahead and continue on with the meeting while we wait for Councilwoman Grimes to return. Next on the agenda is ordinance 2280, recognition of a community development block grant. Is there any questions from council on this item? Seeing no questions from council regarding this ordinance. No one has registered to provide public comment, no written comments were submitted. This time, looking for a motion and a second to introduce and approve ordinance 2280 on first reading by council seated. Mayor Pro Tem Frank?
Motion to introduce and approve ordinance 2280 on first reading by council seated.
Thank you. Councilwoman Allen Thomas?
Just the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to introduce and approve ordinance 2280 on first reading by council seated. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, will the city clerk please read the title?
Ordinance 2280, an ordinance amending the 2020 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Community Development Block Grant Funds through the CARES Act in the amount of $246,587 and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
I think you have a motion and a second to introduce and approve ordinance 2280, recognition of CDBG grant. And the city title or the title has been read. We'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wardiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, nine to zero.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is administrative council business. First item for discussion is discussion on future board and commission meeting schedules. Will the clerk please provide an update on the boards and commissions?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. As Deputy City Manager Troy Smith discussed earlier, there have been a couple special meetings by the Planning Commission and the Cultural Council. The Quality Community Foundation has another special meeting coming up next week to get the scholarship grants process started. So that'll be the next upcoming special meeting for a board and commission that I'm aware of. At this time, staff is still operating by holding in formal meetings, checking in, and then requesting special meetings as appropriate. At this time, there's really no further update in that regard, and it seems the direction council provided in April is still sufficient at this time.
Any discussion on this item? Anybody have any questions? Seeing no request for discussion or questions, thank you for the update, Mr. Gibson. Next on the agenda is discussion on scheduling of a URA meeting. Staff has identified a need for an urban renewal authority meeting during the week of May 25th to discuss the Greyhound Park project. Will Mr. Smith, Deputy City Manager, please report on the availability of other URA members and pull the council for a preferred date?
Mr. Mayor, I believe Roger has consulted with the other members of the URA and is prepared to discuss with you the availability of those other members.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Tedesco has indicated that any evening after five P.M. is okay with him. Mr. Fairfield is open all evenings. Ms. Lewis indicated that she's available all evenings except the twenty-sixth, which would be Tuesday. Monday is a holiday in case that matters to you guys.
So it sounds like everybody would be available any evening, be it Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday evening in the week of May twenty-fifth. Does anyone on council have a preference on what evening we hold this Urban Renewal Authority meeting? Does anybody on council not have a date in which they can meet? Councilwoman Smith?
I'm working on the twenty-seventh, I won't be available that day.
Thank you. Councilman Hearst?
If if anybody's interested, there's an Adams County Regional COVID nineteen coordinating session update on that Thursday. That is from six to seven. I think we could, we could, we could easily miss that, but I just wanted to bring it up because that is on the calendar.
Well, that's actually a meeting that I do not want to miss. We cannot do Monday, we cannot do Tuesday, we cannot do Wednesday, how about? When Tuesday evening at seven-thirty for the URA meeting, anybody have objections to that time?
I didn't hear what day you said.
Thursday, the twenty-eighth from seven-thirty. All right, please schedule the URA meeting for Thursday. The twenty-eighth of May at seven-thirty P.M. via Zoom with Urban Renewal Authority members. No need to send me an email requesting approval of that since we just approved it. Good, Mr. Gibson?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, do any council members have any administrative council business they would like to discuss? Councilwoman Grimes?
I've heard a lot of complaints lately about the Republic Trash Service, and I'm just curious if the city staff is hearing those same complaints. Things like trash isn't getting picked up at all, things like the trash is getting picked up, but they're leaving part of their can still filled with trash. Just want to see if we can clean up that service a little bit for some of our residents.
Mr. Smith?
I'm not aware of any particular complaints, Roger, if you have any, please unmute yourself, thanks for the feedback. I would indicate that some of the procedural changes that the collectors have instituted as a result of COVID nineteen include they won't get out of the truck. And so in places where people are overfilling their trash cans and they're not dumping automatically. Or in cases when cardboard is perhaps stacked up, those things are not getting picked up. And that's a procedural change residents need to be aware of. And in addition to that, Roger, are you aware of any particular complaints we've received?
I am not, but we will certainly pass this on to Public Works to make an inquiry.
The specific complaint, I don't know if it matters where it came from, but the River Run area seems to be having some particular challenges getting their trash picked up. Even going so far as to take it upon themselves to call Republic and request that they come back and get their trash and. Not, they're not getting, they're getting a response saying that they'll send someone out to pick up their trash, and then it's not happening. So, yeah, if you guys could just follow, follow up with Republic, that'd be awesome.
Will do.
Thank you, guys.
So I have received several complaints regarding trash not getting picked up, most of it has died down, mostly was during the transition period. I worked with Mr. Petrovic with Republic to get those issues taken up, they've been very responsive to do so. So if there are issues out there, you know, if people do engage us, then we have a direct line to the Municipal Services Manager. Who is very responsive in order to make sure these things are taken care of. Thank you for addressing that, Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
Thank you, Councilwoman Grimes, for bringing that up, especially in my ward, it's a concern also. And if if residents, if someone from Republic can reach out and clarify, a lot of. The residents in my ward, Ward Two, have not even received their second trash container, but yet they came and picked up their recycle. Container, so that is a big problem in Ward Two, they never received their second container. So if if staff can look into that. One other big concern, I wanted to see if staff could look into. In my ward, there's a serious concern with shopping carts all over. I want to see if staff can look into that, or if there's some kind of way can staff reach out to Walmart and King Supers to start collecting those. Like I said, they're just all over the city, and I think Walmart and King Supers should be sort of held accountable for that as well. Because I remember years ago, King Supers used to have someone go around picking up the shopping carts. But they're starting to go in the roads and, you know, just all over Ward Two. So if some, if staff can look into that as well, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, so as far as, once again, with Republic Services, every single call that comes into Republic Services is tracked to be a phone number or address. If residents are having an issue, then they need to provide either their address or their phone number that they called Republic Services for. So that they can track it down and figure out what is going on. And like I said, Mr. Petrovic from Republic is very responsive to making sure that everything is cleaned up, responds within twenty-four hours, and has been very good at getting a lot of this stuff taken care of. So if you have residents who are not getting the cart that they've asked for, or they have asked for a swap out, or it's not getting picked up. Then request their phone number, request their their address, and then either contact Mr. Petrovic directly or send it through me, and I'll contact him for you. If you need his email address, let me know. So in regards to the shopping cart issue, Mr. Tinklerberg or Mr. Smith, would you like to address that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, I have seen a number of the email communications you've sent to in that in reference to those shopping carts over the last couple of days. I know those items have been assigned out, and I think staff members are reaching out to the business owners, asking them to collect those carts. We'll continue working on that, thank you.
Thank you, anything else, Councilwoman?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hearst?
You got to piggyback on that, different issue, same same issue. If we could just, when we're following up with them, I think it's probably a really good time anyways, because it seems that our website might have. Our c-three.gov. Slash trash. Might have some outdated information on it now, because I was just talking to someone last week who had a bulk pickup process. They came out and picked up their bulk items, and then saw just today on an online forum. That someone just received their second trash can, so it sounds like they might have picked up those operations again. I do know they either reduced those or shut them down for a period of time, so if we could just get an update with them, that's just something else that we can follow up on. That would be. Are accurately representing their current services on our website.
Thanks, sir, good comments. Councilwoman Noble?
Yes, thank you very much, a couple of questions here. One is, we haven't discussed. The homeless situation in Commerce City, in particular with regard to coronavirus and how we are addressing this and helping them. So while you might not have an answer right now, I would like us to take a look at that at a future meeting. And secondly, a resident was very concerned about a terrible odor. Last Wednesday at seventy-second and Highway Six, which is Vasquez. And it's near Honin Equipment, nothing to do with Honin Equipment, I'm sure, it's just a placement there. And I don't know if anyone else had the same complaint. It then led to an entire conversation about our water situation here in Commerce City. And I hope we're able to get back to taking care of those kinds of issues here as well very soon. But if anyone else heard anything about a particular odor last Wednesday, or if there were any other complaints at City Hall, just curious, thank you.
Thank you. You raised your hand again, did you want to speak again?
I didn't know that I was muted when I lowered my hand.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Yeah, I would like to see if we can get the first quarter update from City Manager McBroom. Put back on the schedule, I know that we delayed that because of COVID, but I feel like we're starting to phase back in, so I would like to see if we can get that. First quarter update put back on the schedule.
You're requesting that the. Update that was part of his twenty-nineteen evaluation be added?
His evaluation, correct.
Okay. Are you making a motion to have that presented on a certain day?
If I need to motion, I will, I would like to see it at the next, within the next meeting or two. If I, do I need a motion for a specific date?
Mr. Attorney, does that need to be motioned?
My apologies, unless it's, there's an indication that it's going to come in the next meeting or two from the city manager's office, I think that would be helpful. I don't recall what council's last discussion was, so I believe that would be appropriate.
So I'd like to motion for it to be added to the June first. Meeting, since, I mean, we're now on going into the third, you know, finishing second quarter almost, so I would like to see if we can add it to the June first meeting.
I have a motion to add the update that was part of city managers' twenty-nineteen review. Added back into the schedule with the date of June first for the meeting, Councilman Hearst?
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second, is there any discussion on that item? Councilman Madera?
Yeah, you know, being that the city manager is not at this meeting, currently out sick. Maybe we should continue this to the next meeting and have him weigh in on where. He's out on this process and maybe do something towards the end of Q two, I mean, two weeks is. A short turnaround, I know this was supposed to be done for the first quarter, but there's been a lot of other priorities that have taken precedence over the past few months, as we all know. So, you know, it'd be. It'd just be prudent to get him to weigh in and. You know, in terms of timeline.
Councilman Wardiola?
Yeah, no, I would ask, what about stuff that he couldn't work on because he's doing like COVID stuff? How are we going to look at that, that's my question, where his resources and time was conducting other business? I mean, there was a point in time that we we were doing a lot, I know it's dying down, and I think we have to get it, get it back on the the schedule. But how 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 could we evaluate that when from March thirteenth to now, I would say even maybe last week. His priority was the COVID nineteen issues, I think it'd be unfair to hold him to a standard or to hold him until say, hey, where's this at? Well, A, his employees are not there, B, he's elsewhere doing stuff. So I just want to see, hear some feedback or discussion on how we're going to do that, to be fair.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Um, so Councilman Guardiola, I I understand where you're coming from. I still feel like, though, when we, when we tabled that, I mean, we should have essentially had a review, that first quarter review. Two weeks after that, like it should have been ready to go. And I understand that we're going to have to have some, some, you know, grace and understanding with what's been going on, if there are things that. You know, we need to consider in light of COVID. However, you know, like I said, I feel like we're almost done on second quarter. I I know that COVID's taken, taken a big chunk of time, but most of this should have been done and ready to go before COVID ever hit. So I just would like to get this back on and get an update with where we are, and with the understanding that some things may have changed or. You know, there there maybe has to be changes on a few things, I get that.
Definitely, totally agree. I think that's good, so I would maybe ask for to amend the motion and to just get an update of where he's at and what stuff he's working. You know, in my, in the education field, mid evaluations were right when COVID hit, and we got some done. But our district has forgotten all the evaluations for all our teachers in the in the spring, because there's other things we they had to do. So if we could get an update of what he has done and what he continues. I think I would be, you know, forward in like what Oscar said later on, but we do definitely need to get it on the schedule, I totally agree with that. I just don't want to hold him accountable in sense where he's like, well, I was done with this and that, it might even be an excuse he could use, I don't know. But we just got to be fair, and I agree, maybe put it down in later June to give him some some time to come up with an update.
I I would.
Go ahead, no, go ahead, my apologies, go ahead.
I. I, the 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 issue that I have is I don't want just an update, we we had kind of an update back in March. And like I, we, this was, you know, we had expectations, and again, I understand that maybe not everything has happened or things have changed. And we have to have grace and understand that, like as a council, like some things may not work. You know, I would be willing to amend my motion by two weeks, but I don't want to just keep delaying this out, like. That's just my feeling, I'd be willing to amend the motion to June fifteenth.
So you amended your motion to June fifteenth, I believe, Councilman Hearst, you seconded, so are you in agreement to the amended motion to June fifteenth?
Yes, sir, I am in agreement.
Continue discussion, Councilwoman Ellen Thomas?
Just trying to recall, because I don't recall, was was he given specific dates by the previous council? Because I don't recall, and then I, at the other meeting, I forgot, when is he, when was he supposed to give us another update? Because I don't recall.
During his twenty-nineteen review, he was requested to provide an update on key items that the council felt needed attention. That was supposed to be done by the first quarter of twenty-twenty. In March second, during an executive session, we established the meeting would take place on March thirtieth, on March. Sixteenth or so, sixteenth or following, during a special meeting of the council, we extended all deadlines and included this task as an extension on that deadline. And my understanding is the motion on the table is now to make sure that this is put back on to the schedule for June fifteenth. Does that adequately answer your question on the timeline?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Grimes?
Yeah, I I agree, I think we need to get that scheduled, but I would like to see Brian present before we make that motion, just for his feedback. On when is appropriate in terms of what he's dealing with already, and I know things are slowing down, and and I like hearing that we need to extend some grace. Because some of those things that were on the priority list certainly have fallen to the backseat with the COVID crisis. So, but I would really like to see us have feedback from Brian before we make a determination on the date, but certainly want to get it back on the schedule.
Councilman Madera?
Yeah, another thing, I would just want to get some, make sure that we're giving a precise and clear directive as to what we expect this time. You know, the budget's supposed to be cut anywhere from ten to twenty-five million dollars, you know, as we saw in the presentation earlier. So, you know, what what exactly are we looking for, are we looking for those changes? Because it's constantly changing, right? We, we're kind of asking him to give us a forward-looking projection of where things are headed and what's going to be done. But, I mean, everything's been turned upside down, so do you want to know? You know, kind of like these updates that we've been getting, how that's going to affect things, or, you know, I think we we have to adjust and say, okay. All these things that were on the table, a quarter of our budget could possibly be cut. So. And as we heard, you know, there's furloughs that are going to happen, and that's not going to cover a fraction of that budget shortfall. So, you know, there's going to be projects. So, you know, there's gonna be projects that are gonna, gonna fall off and so, no. I just want to know what is it that we're looking for exactly and we should lay that out and I also think that Brian should be present. So we can discuss this with him and, you know, lay out precise expectations and then have him. You know, live up to those.
Uh Councilman Wadiola.
Yeah, and I think it's just a professional cur- uh courtesy to let him be in these discussions. I mean, I've gone to all my. My principal and they let me know what I have to do. We're making a decision right now to hold him accountable, which is great and put it on the schedule, but he's not here. And I mean, I just think that's just not fair.
Mayor Protem.
Um so, I I understand that, but at the same time, when you, when you are at your job and you're scheduled for a review. You are, know that you're scheduled for a review. I'm not, I'm not asking for updates. I'm asking for the expectations that council defined last year. I want, again, we're talking about. This was supposed to be done May thirtieth. We, the the covid thing happened May six, or I'm sorry, March thirtieth. The covid thing happened March sixteenth, like it, the plan and processes and expectations that we defined at the end of twenty nineteen. Should have been done. I do understand that there's gonna be changes. I understand that. I'm not, and I'm not asking tonight to. Blindside Brian or anything like that. That's not at all what this is about. It's just about, we need to get this put back on the schedule. I'm held accountable at my job for my expectations, so are every one of you and. It needs to be put back on the schedule and I I want to know where we are on expectations that city council set at the end of last year. That the agreement was that the expectations were set for the end of first quarter. We are now almost at the end of second quarter. I I I would like to know where we are on the expectations.
Uh Councilman Wadiola.
Totally agree with you, Councilwoman Mayor Protem Nicole, but in all our jobs, uh covid nineteen hasn't happened. So I think we have to really look at that and what type of employers are we if we're not looking at that? I get it, March thirtieth was the deadline, but you have up to that day to do it. We robbed them of two weeks or covid did. And for us to, I would, I would be in support if we moved it and June fifteenth, but even have this conversation on June first. And say, hey, Brian, is June fifteenth, are good for you or move it back? I mean, we all got to be held accountable, but during this time. You know, that, there's been a lot of grace in a lot of fields and it seems to me that we just want to kind of rush this. For him to put it on the schedule and it needs to be on the schedule. It has to be, but even not, even having this discussion without him present. What type of employers are we? Professional courtesy goes a long way. I think he, hopefully he'd be listening or if not, he's getting rest, but he could, you know what, this is coming. So I wouldn't be in favor for June fifteenth. I want to have that conversation with him and then say, hey, this is, and then ho- hold him accountable. But covid nineteen flipped a lot of people's world upside down, emotional, physical, um job-wise, family-wise. I mean, it, a lot of it and we're still dealing with it and I agree, we have to have it on there, but I just think. We need to bring him in this conversation and, or say, hey, what do you have up to March sixteenth? What, what do you have? What have you been working up to March sixteenth? And I think that's a reasonable thing to say, okay. All right, you, this is what you have till March sixteenth. We understand that March thirtieth was your deadline. Okay, how do we move forward? I just think um we kind of are blindsiding him by talking about this now, which is good. But without him present and him giving us feedback, um and the covid thing, that again, I just. I I'm not in favor of that right now. Um we do have to get it. If we could compromise on a date and so he knows. This is up to March sixteenth. This is what we expect, like Oscar said. These are the things we expect from him, March sixteen. And then we can move forward, so that's just my, my, my opinion.
Councilwoman Noble.
Thank you very much. It's interesting that we're talking about this because it was on March twelfth when I spoke with uh Brian. As I was on my way to a uh event called The Future of Work. That the Colorado Department of uh Labor and Employment was putting on and he said we're closing. All Commerce City public facilities. So leading up to that moment meant that there were a lot of meetings that had to take place. Before that, that decision was made. So really, it started earlier than that. It must have started a week before. It must have started two weeks before. They had been working on this. I I have, I have um. Really nothing but praise for the way that uh Mr. Groom and the staff have. Handled all of this involved with um the coronavirus and all the steps that they have taken. I am grateful to them that uh they have accomplished as much as they had. So if you were defining his um achievements. It might look differently than it did uh when you put this together in December. I agree with those that he needs to be present. That is a courtesy and especially because as others have pointed out, we're looking at the budget. There may be many things that they're working on right now, just trying to bring the city back online and that kind of thing, so. I would prefer to wait until Mr. McBroom was uh present as well at the next meeting.
Councilwoman Grimes.
Yeah, I also just want to point out that there was really some confusion about what the actual expectation was for. The presentation, um it, are we evaluating goals actually accomplished as defined by the council? Related to projects or are we looking for more of um process improvements? Um and things like that associated with how Brian conducts his, his work in his position. Um I think, I think that was very confusing the last time we talked about this, so I'd I'd like to just clear up. Are we looking for a checklist of the things that have been accomplished as far as projects go or are we looking for him to tell us? Here's how we're going to implement processes that are going to improve our workflows going forward.
My understanding is the latter of what you said. If any of the old council members that did that review disagree with that, please chime in. Councilwoman Smith.
So I, I agree that the whole covid thing kind of, it turned everybody's life upside down. I get it. Every shift we come in and there's a new policy in place for how we deal with covid. But I think on June fifteenth, having that evaluation or that quarter, first quarter thing available. I think one month is a good enough time for him to get that available. Things are starting to wind down. He should have time to get it available for us.
Mayor Protem.
Um so Councilwoman Grimes, yeah, it was more of the processes. We had very specific expectations that we laid out and said. These are the, these are the specific, and I think it was seven items. I don't know the exact number, but these were the very specific things. That we expected, that we wanted to see, um and we wanted to know how he was going to implement and, and do these things. So it was, it didn't have to be the entire like uh plan and this, and it was already moving forward. It needed to be the, the plan for each of these items. Um you know, I I. Do understand where everyone is coming from with the professional courtesy. I'm willing to withdraw my motion, but I will bring it up again next in two weeks when he's here.
So Mayor Protem is withdrawing a motion. Councilman Hurst, are you okay with that motion being withdrawn since you seconded it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Motion and second have both been withdrawn. Is there any other administrative council business anybody would like to discuss? Councilwoman Smith.
So going back to what uh Councilwoman Noble talked about with the homeless population, um we have a big population going on with the. Um Eagle Point Rec Center, one in the core city, and then under one of the bridges, there's someone camped out under the bridge and. I know they're not really doing anybody any harm, but it's not a very safe situation for them either. So we're just, I'm just kind of curious what's going on with that and how we're addressing that.
Before we go to a question on that, Mr. Attorney, you had a comment you needed to make.
It was an additional item for administrative council business, Mayor. That can be done after. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Smith, would you like to address uh where we are with the homeless thing? I know that uh I have had conversations with Mr. McBroom regarding the use of our recreation centers to temporarily house them. Similar to what Denver has done, but no action was ever taken. Um I have an action item that was opened up all the way back in January regarding the homeless uh at um Veterans Memorial Park. That apparently has not been resolved and now this is drawing more attention with more residents complaining about it. So can we please be updated on a plan that we're going to do in order to, one, assist the homeless population in our community? And two, deal with the resident concerns, that that is their taxpayers paying for these parks and recreation facilities. And yet they are not being kept the way that they expect them to be kept with their money.
And thank you, uh Mr. Mayor and other council members who brought that up uh for the feedback. Uh it, I'm not in a position tonight to provide you a comprehensive update about what we're doing with respect to homelessness. However, I can uh provide you some uh insights to the difficulty in managing this issue in our community. Certainly there are, are certain legal matters um that prevent us from simply prohibiting people. To access public property. Uh that certainly plays a part in some of the descriptions that have been provided. Um a- as you're aware, other cities have had difficulty um with litigation surrounding actions that they have taken. And we'll want to make sure whatever our responses are in alignment with the United States Constitution. And and the laws of the state of Colorado with that respect. Um having said that, I did talk with the chief of police today about uh a couple of the homeless encampments that have been mentioned. Uh tonight on this call. Uh he is aware of those and in those cases where we do have health or safety issues that surround. Um those living arrangements and we determine that we can take some sort of action to clean those up. Or move uh those camps on to pre- present the health and safety issues. We hire an external company that assists us with uh that cleanup and and the relocation of those items. Uh the chief informed me that he has, his staff is aware of those few locations and that he has reached out to that vendor. Who has given him an extended timeline for joining and assisting us in the removal of those camps. Given the covid nineteen crisis. Uh we are continuing to monitor those situations, the health and safety uh of. Those folks and other residents attempting to use our amenities is certainly a paramount concern. Um and we do attempt to provide some uh referrals to uh the county who provides for those services. As you all know, we don't uh offer health and human services functions as a primary uh city operation. And uh your assistance through the grant programs to our community's not-for-profit. Uh company, uh organizations were certainly a, a help in this regard. I've heard the request twice tonight for some additional information related to homelessness and I certainly have taken those down. And uh we will be back to you to speak in more detail uh about this topic in the future.
So I can appreciate it's a difficult position given court rulings and everything, but if our officers are able to stand in the middle of Second Creek and watch Denver. Get rid of encampments in their city limits, then I would think that our officers can also get rid of city encampments within our city limits. Otherwise, why are we out there supporting Denver's police department while they conduct those operations?
Uh we have worked in connection with the Denver Police Department on a number of operations along the Sand Creek and and um. We have done that and we have tools to use um that help us. Uh deal with those issues particularly along our open spaces and along the, the Sand Creek. Um it's a little bit different situation. Uh some of the, the comments that we've seen come in even today on CRMs are with. Respect to patrons utilizing facilities. Um and and residents believing that non-city residents should not be allowed in those facilities. There are some misconceptions that exist um about the city's legal authority to deal with some of these issues and. We'll try to lay those out when we bring back the information for council's consideration.
Councilwoman Noble.
I want to go back to uh one of our uh community speakers earlier this evening. And that is about uh Suncor in particular, but there is a settlement with Suncor and CDPHE. And I just want to make certain that uh Commerce City has a big role to play in the various components. And uh I would really like to have that addressed before uh we get too far down the line here and. Lose our place since it is located here in Commerce City. There is environmental issues, there's health issues. And um and so forth, so that will be very important. We also just got an update from uh Suncor about uh. The uh issue that they had a couple of nights ago, so uh they will begin flaring again as they bring the plant up, a backup online. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other administrative council business? Councilman Hurst.
Yeah, quickly, um to add on to what uh Councilwoman Noble just said. Uh I'd like to run a motion that we uh open an RFI for some continuous monitoring systems. In 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 the reason being, I believe all of us were um contacted by a company called Canary and I'm not. Uh I'm not advocating for one company and that was the reason why I'm running a motion for an op- RFI. So I would like to hear their um competitors' pitches as well. And really what that would be revolved around in RFIs is no um, no strings attached. I want to see what information is out there available um to our community to invest in continuous monitoring systems, whether it's a Suncor. Or uh oil and gas sites. This will allow us to have the facts um done by a third party. And I think a lot of uh questions and concerns um will have. Better underlying data for us to address moving forward, so uh my motion is to, is to um. By ju- for the June fifteenth meeting, have a uh exploratory RFI um. Packet maybe ready to present to us on how we're going to explore what new technologies are arising in the continuous monitoring world.
Thank you, Councilman Hurst. Um you were contacted by Canary because of my recommendation to Brittany Moore Saunders. She reached out to the individual council members to discuss their project. About a month and a half ago, I had a meeting with uh Mr. Smith and Commissioner Odorizio about the possibility of using that pro- product. Um for continuous monitoring and at that time was told that there was nothing we could do because covid nineteen had everything shut down. Um I would like to ask that you pull that motion back. I think there's other discussions that need to be had regarding that project. Because that project is um looking at other opportunities for funding outside of the city having to fund that. Um so I think that uh there's a, a bigger discussion that needs to take place that probably should go to an executive session. Um because it's going to deal with our relationship with other individuals and how we go about trying to get funding. So that this is not on the backs of the city in order and the taxpayers to have to fund this whenever it shouldn't be their responsibility to fund something to protect their health.
So that's why I, why I asked for an RFI. Um I have very little intention of us paying for. Uh the ones that was pitched to us. Um but as we uh continue to explore, you know, potential. Land use development and everything, you know, we, we always have this continuing, continuous monitoring phrase in our uh documentation. That I've always posed the question of, there's not even that technology available. Um so outside of that discussion. Um and and I, if it needs to be a future date on into July or August, um that we have that discussion, I would like a fact. Um or educational, a- and it could be possibly, you know, in the future as we start doing study sessions again. But having them on the um, you know, maybe for a one-hour presentation of a couple different opportunities that may be out there for us to consider.
Right, a- and I think that we can have that presentation on a future meeting uh without.
So I'll amend my motion for um city staff to start, you know, exploring contacts. Um on how we can, could get that type of presentation, whether it's informational or it actually goes to an RFI where we have. Companies competing out there to show us what, what product is better and why.
Thank you. And also I do want to mention that we do also have a continuous monitoring uh contract coming up. And I think Mr. Smith can uh expand upon that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just gonna add, um one of the concerns that we've had in staff is, is about the coordination of the various air monitoring. Authorities and that exist in and around the Suncor plant area. Um you have Tri County, you have CDPHE. Um, you have Tri-County, you have CDPHE, you have a federal EPA. Um, a- a- and so we have reached out uh si- to CDPHE who is the the primary regulator of that area and asked for a conversation with them to coordinate um about those issues. As you may know, the the order that was issued by CDPHE um after Suncor's violations included statements about them providing for air monitoring and funding air monitoring. Um, and so we uh actually have a meeting set up with them tomorrow. Um, and I do believe that we will be able to come back um and provide counsel with some updated information at the next council meeting. If Jason Rogers is still on the call, if you choose to add anything to that, Jason, uh, please jump on.
No, I I I think you're spot on, Troy. Um, to Troy's point, we do have a meeting with CDPHE. And we have met in most recent past also Tri-County Health as well, trying to best understand how to navigate the various air mine uh requirements both at the state and at the local level. And uh obviously CDPHE is is the place for us to be able to s- start initiate those conversations and see how we uh bring that forward. And tomorrow hopefully will be a a good conversation for us.
Thank you, Jason.
Councilman Hurst?
So with that update, I'll pull my motion because I am happy to hear that we are uh investigating that and moving forward. Uh, but please, please, I'd like to drive home the point that um I think we need to be in front of understanding what's available uh on in the market. If that whole separate issue goes the way that that the discussions have, are we going to be prepared to expand on that as needed? Is our community going to want to invest in that? And and there's a lot of questions um that I think could be answered in in a study session that will give us the preparation to have those proper discussions when the time uh arrives.
Thank you. Councilwoman Grimes?
I was going to second uh Councilmember Hurst's motion, uh, but I would just kind of add on that I am interested in not only the government regulation perspective from CDPHE, but also the vendor perspective. Uh, as far as what technology is available to us once we decide what level we want to regulate at. Additionally, I had raised my hand because I'd like to have a conversation about re-implementing study sessions. It seems prudent um to have that conversation because we're starting to have a lot more um regular work, if you will, come back into the the agendas and um I think that it's time to start talking about how we can conduct those. I don't know if that means remote study sessions or if there is a way for us to start having a conversation about an appropriately socially-distanced study session in council chambers. I don't know what that looks like, but just wanted to bring it up for discussion.
Anybody wishing to add to the discussion regarding we're bringing back study sessions to our workflow? Councilman Wadiola?
Yeah, I think uh we need to phase it in and I think study sessions would be a good way to start bringing them through Zoom. I mean, they're basically presentations and where we could ask questions and I I think that would be a good start to see and then just work with our task force and the the staff to see when we can maybe do one regular meeting uh back in the building. Um, but I think study sessions should definitely uh see when we could start bringing them back on the other Mondays as a Zoom meeting. Um, all they're doing is presenting and we could ask questions. So I would definitely be in favor of bringing in study sessions first and then in the future uh phasing it in when the task force and and the staff is ready for us.
Any other discussion? Does anybody wish to make a motion regarding the reinstation of uh reinstating um Councilwoman Grimes?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to reinstate study sessions virtually for the time being with the opportunity to phase them in um as staff is ready for us to do so.
Mayor Pro Tem?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to reinstate study sessions using the Zoom virtual platform until staff is ready to bring us back into the building. Is there any discussion? Councilman Wadiola?
Yeah, Troy, uh, how soon could we get those going? Maybe June eighth? Or I would ask uh Councilwoman Grimes, what date do you have in mind uh given feedback from staff?
Uh, we don't have a meeting on May twenty-fifth, which is next Monday because it is a holiday. We have a council meeting on June first. Uh, so the next opportunity for a study session would be June eighth unless we wanted to do that especially outside of our normal Monday schedule. Councilwoman Grimes?
I think June eighth is a great target date for a a virtual study session.
Mayor Pro Tem, do you agree to that amendment?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Hurst? Councilman Hurst, Mr. Clerk?
Uh, I was gonna have the same suggestion of June eighth, uh, so I support that.
Very good, thank you. Any other discussion? I have a motion and a second to reinstate study sessions using the Zoom virtual platform, beginning with the first meeting on June eighth. There's no other discussion. We'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes, but I saw uh Mr. Smith raise his hand to speak. Was there something that you wanted to add, Mr. Smith? That's for
Yes, ma'am. I was going to attempt to answer Mr. Wadiola's question. Um, you may have heard earlier this evening. Mr. Tinklinburg mentioned the possibility of being back in front of council to discuss uh the amendments to the LDC related to oil and gas. Uh, that is something we were contemplating being r- being brought back in front of council. Um, so we can continue the vote and and we'll endeavor to get those things on the agenda in front of the council.
Councilmember Wadiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes unanimously nine to zero.
Thank you. Any other administrative council business? Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and council, uh, there was one item I wanted to add last minute. There's a pending ordinance right now to approve the CARES Act funding and appropriate it into your budget. Um, that won't be heard until June one. That ordinance also approves the IGA that allows us to receive that money. Um, and so I was going to see if council approved it on first reading, but I was going to see if council would approve a motion this evening to authorize the execution of that IGA before the ordinance is finally approved so that money can be put into process faster in the city.
Councilmembers wishing to make a motion to approve the implementation of the IGA and acceptance of CARES Act funding prior to us formally approving the ordinance next month? Councilwoman Grimes?
I will motion as such.
Thank you, Councilman Hurst.
I will second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve or to uh allow for the implementation of an IGA with Adams County regarding the distribution of CARES Act funding. Um, Adams County received ninety million dollars in the first round of CARES Act funding. They have agreed to distribute forty-five percent of that. Uh, my discussions with Mr. McRum, our take on that is going to be approximately four million dollars. I believe is what we are looking at. So this ordinance would allow them to implement the IGA and accept the funding and begin to put that into process prior to our formal approval of the ordinance. We will take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
Yes.
Councilmember Wadiola?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Passes unanimously nine to zero.
Thank you, and we'll look for that ordinance to come on June first, I believe. So, great. Uh, Councilwoman Grimes, no, okay, you took your hand down. Anybody else have any administrative council business? Well, great, I have some items that I would like to discuss. Um, would like to start with uh status of the bridge on one hundred and twelfth Avenue near Brighton. Uh, do we have an update on where we are on that? I know that CDOT came out and did a bridge inspection. We had to shut down the eastbound or westbound lane. And uh what is the timetable that we are looking for to getting that bridge either replaced or repaired so that we can open that road fully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Roger, are you able to speak to that?
Just in general, uh, either Brent or Joe can give you more details, but uh, council recently approved the design contract and so the design firm is working on design for replacement.
Thank you. Any timeline on when that should be uh completed?
Mr. Mayor, if I may add to what Roger has stated, this is Joe Wilson of Public Works. Uh, the contract has been let to vanish. Uh, engineering firm, they're in the process of doing the design. They're coordinating it right now with CDOT and SHPO, the Historical Preservation Office of State. Right now, we're anticipating the design will be done in August. And from that point, we would proceed with uh soliciting bids and hopefully uh start construction uh in the fall.
Thanks, sir. Um, next up, uh, Suncor. Suncor has sent three emails out. Uh, the first email, actually, actually, they've sent four emails, excuse me. First email concerned a sheen that was identified in the creek that they took action to contain. Second email was an update stating they still don't know where that is from. Third email was concerning their power issues that they had in a re- uh requirement for increased flaring while they shut the plant down. And now we received another email this evening about increased flaring. All these emails are coming to the council as stakeholders. However, they are not being distributed to residents of the community. I have tried my best to distribute them through social media, but as I am constantly reminded, not everybody is on social media. So my question is, when we receive these emails, why are we not using the city alert system to forward them out to the residents so they are aware of issues that are going on in the community? And if there's not a reason why we're not doing it, then how do we stop doing that or how do we start doing that now?
When you say community alert system, Mr. Mayor, what is it that you're referring to?
Uh, we have the city alerts system where residents can go, click that little icon for the mail up at the top of the C-three website. They can sign up for city alerts so that they're notified of police activity. They're notified of a um land use cases. They're notified when the city manager report is issued. There are various things, uh, requests for proposals when they go out. So there are various things that residents are able to sign up for to receive an email in their inbox. I still receive them and have, even though I've been sitting on the council. Um, that lets me know whenever the city is sending out that email. So if the city is receiving an email from Suncor stating that there are issues with their operation or issues that are environmentally related that the community needs to know, why are we not forwarding those emails through the city alert system?
I don't know if we have an alert uh built for Suncor. Each one of those things you just mentioned requires um a construction within the website to notify people. Um, you mentioned land use cases. I don't believe we have that alert built yet. It is something that we're working on. Um, I will double check that information and and get back to council with that. Uh, I do believe those emails can be placed in our in our community news release section on the website. And that's typically what we would do with a with another agency's press release in in these situations.
Well, the problem that is, that that's a passive response and that doesn't go out to the community to let them know, hey, I should go read this article. And so if we can have police reports going out and saying, hey, we're investigating this or we have a fatality, there's an option for that to go out and I still get the emails that come in that say the police department is investigating this or we had this take place. And those are going through that city alert system. Why can't these emails from Suncor be forwarded through the system so that residents are actively notified that there is an issue instead of passively requiring them to visit the city website?
Again, I I don't know that they can't be, but that does require uh again, some work to make that happen. So I'll certainly check into that and and uh inform the council uh whether or not they are one and and two, what would be required to make that happen.
Uh, that would be good because like I said, the only people that are currently receiving that are the stakeholders that Suncor has identified that need to receive that. And there's no way to actively get that out to the community short of trying to share that on social media, but with not every resident having uh access to social media, having the ability to either alert via that or alert via text message uh would be a an an improvement in our ability to pass on that information to the residents. Great. Um, next up, uh, speeding. Speeding continues to be an issue. I know we talked this evening regarding the um drawdown of enforcement and then the increase of enforcement that is taking place. Um, I would like to draw attention to an email that was sent. It was an update from the police department on May seventh regarding uh people complained about uh motorcycles and vehicle racing. One of the comments in here is current staffing and CFS levels do not allow officers to proactively sit in the area attempting to produce results. Now, I love our police department. I love the fact that they put their lives on the line every day to keep our community safe. But I have an issue with the fact that we can have two officers sitting out on Tower Road, watching whether or not people speed on that. We can have an officer camped out at the uh Lutheran Church on one hundred and fourth Avenue. Officers camped out in multiple locations on Highway Two, attempting to catch people speeding. Yet we fail to have the ability to have officers sit in the residential neighborhoods where people are really concerned about the speeding. We have constantly brought up speeding on Landmark Avenue. We've constantly brought up speeding on Holly. Just this evening, Austin Gonzalez, a resident in the southern part of the city, mentioned that they are speeding down Holly Avenue again. So why is it that we can put these officers out on these higher-speed, higher-traffic routes as opposed to putting the officers in the residential neighborhoods and allowing them to actually catch the people and slow the people down where children are playing and where we need to actually take proactive action before a child or another individual is struck and killed or maimed? I'll let you take that one back. No need to provide an answer now, but I would like an answer as to how we can better manage where we do our proactive speeding enforcement. I I get the fact that Highway Two, the speed limit was lowered from fifty-five to forty-five. We hear all that all the time. But having two officers sitting under the trees running a radar gun, when we could rather have that one of those officers in the neighborhoods running that same radar gun trying to prevent people from speeding down some of these problem streets, which are continually being passed on to us and yet it doesn't seem like we are able to effectively get that. So please let me know going forward how we can better use our resources in that manner. Next up, uh, have some pictures I would like to show you and actually I think it's actually pretty good that we decided to uh, give me a second here. Do that. One second while I try to start this here. Here we go. Have some pictures. I think it's good that we actually decided to delay the enforcer, the passing of the weed control ordinance. While out driving along, I happened to notice everybody seeing my picture while this photo loads up? It's loading. Slow. Uh, come on. Apparently, we're not gonna work here. This is maddening. I'm sorry. I tried to it doesn't look like this is gonna work. All right. Uh, the park and uh Chambers, Hundred and Seventeenth Avenue and Chambers. I understand that there is some turf restoration that is going on. That is not my concern, the fact that the surf restoration is going on. It's the fact that there are weeds that have grown that are about twenty inches tall to twenty-four inches tall along there. Now, that park has been bragged about in places all over this country about one of the wonderful things that we did for our community and building these parks. And yet we have let it go to complete disrepair. Now we're talking about passing an ordinance that is going to require landowners to go out there and keep their weeds under control, but we as a city have failed to do that on our on our own property. I can't imagine if I was a homeowner living right there on Hundred and Seventeenth Avenue where my land backs up to the brand-new city park and having to deal with that. If I was a homeowner and did not cut my grass, I'd either have HOA enforcement coming down on me or Neighborhood Services coming down on me. So my question is, why is it when we have two hundred and forty employees that are sitting at home, not working and still drawing pay that we can't manage to run our lawn mowers out there and make sure that our parks are taken care of the way that they're supposed to and the way that the residents expect them to be?
Not sure who you're referring to. Not sure who you're referring that to, so I'll jump in. We will refer that to our Parks Maintenance Staff. Uh, I know they're in the process of, uh, staffing up yet. That got behind because of COVID- nineteen, so, uh, we will address it.
Thank you. Also, on Hundred and Seventeenth Avenue or on, uh, Chambers Avenue, if you go further north, you end up at the, uh, brand new storage unit that was approved erroneously by the city staff. And that property there has some horrible weeds growing out there. I know this has been an issue before. So my question is, is Neighborhood Services actively out doing their job? Or are they sitting at home drawing a paycheck as a member of the two hundred and forty employees that are not working and still receiving pay?
They are out, and, uh, so that will be added to their list. I know that they are active. The people who have been at home drawing pay are VHEs.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, next up, same on Chambers Avenue. We have a crosswalk and a rapid flashing brief, uh, beacon at Hundred and Seventeenth Avenue where the park is. If you go further north to Hundred and Nineteenth Avenue, you have children who are trying to cross the Chambers, playing Frogger with the traffic out there, uh, going over to seven eleven to get their Slurpee. Why do we not have a crosswalk out there or a rapid flashing beacon to allow them? If the criteria warrants a rapid flashing beacon at Hundred and Seventeenth Avenue for the park, I would think it would also be warranted at Hundred and Nineteenth Avenue so that the children in villages above will run east, can get to seven eleven or to the storage unit should they need to safely.
There's, uh, criteria that are used for determining when those are put in, so we will have the staff conduct, uh, an assessment of them.
Thank you. Like I said, if the criteria is being met at Hundred and Seventeenth Avenue, I would think that the criteria would also be met at Hundred and Nineteenth Avenue on the same roadway. Next up, uh, through the Mask for Mayors program, I have ordered and received forty-eight hundred facial coverings. I'll go short to call them masks, but have ordered and received forty-eight hundred facial coverings. I'd like to know from the city council, would you like to participate in an event this weekend to pass those out? Would you prefer that we make those available to our businesses since it is still a requirement under the governor's order that all businesses provide them to essential employees? Would you like to just turn this over to the staff and ask the staff to manage the delivery of them? I'm opening this up for what you guys would like to do. My thoughts were, I've seen it in other communities that as a council, we stand out there and pass out the masks or, excuse me, facial coverings to residents or business owners that seem to, you know, feel a need to get these. Um, they are supposed to be, uh, lightweight masks. They come from a company called Bella Canvas. Um, Northland recently distributed their forty-eight hundred ours, uh, receiv- were received today and can be delivered this weekend. Open that up. Any ideas on how you guys would like to help with that, or would you not like to help with that? Mayor Pro Tim?
Um, I would like to have it come from city council, um, just because it's been a while since we've been able to kind of get out, and I realize, obviously, we would have to be masked and gloved, but it would be nice for us to kind of do something to show residents that we're in the same situation that they are. So I, I would actually like to help do that myself.
Councilwoman Smith?
I'd like to be involved with, um, giving it out as well.
Thank you. Councilwoman Allen Thomas?
Um, I would like to help as well, but unfortunately, I cannot because I, um, have family members that are very high vulnerable and high risk. So just because of that, I would like to, but I wouldn't want to jeopardize my immediate family members.
Councilwoman Noble?
Um, I think this is a wonderful idea to give it to the businesses because they're going to have a lot of extra costs. So anything that they can do to help their customers and make their staff members feel more comfortable to open up is a great idea. I would, um, not feel comfortable myself in this position due to my age, for one thing. But the other is that, uh, crowds are not advised at this time, and they're talking about keeping it at ten and under. And I'm not sure how you intend, um, to do that. But I will, uh, just say, I think it's a wonderful idea to give masks to the businesses, but I will have to decline participation.
Thank you. Um, as far as how to do it, my idea is to have a drive-through where people can just drive through the parking lot and you hand them the masks and they continue to drive on so that you do not violate any social distancing requirements. Councilman Wadiola?
Yeah, I think this is a great idea, especially the businesses. I've encountered a couple that they don't have masks. They're looking for masks. So, um, if you could give us the heads up of when, where, this would be good.
Okay. Um, thank you for that. I think, uh, maybe a good solution would be to take half of the mask, which would be about twenty-four hundred, and allocate those to businesses and figure out how it is that we can get those distributed. Maybe, uh, pass those on to the city and allow them for businesses to either pick up or do whatever. As far as for the council, anybody that would like to join, I think, an event on Saturday from about ten to noon, um, there at the Civic Center where people can drive through right there where you drop your ballots off and we hand them masks and, and go. If anybody would like to join me, I'll be there with twenty-four hundred masks and I'll make announcements there. So entirely up to you. If you would like to join, I understand the concerns of not wanting to be there. Thank you for your interest in participating, and we will miss you while you're not there. Lastly, on my administrative council business, uh, earlier this week, I was counseled by or contacted by a resident who was very upset over the poisoning of prairie dogs out in the Second Creek Open Space. Contacted city staff. Um, I know we got an update on that this evening. That update did not answer the questions that I sent to the city manager earlier. Um, I was informed that answering those questions would require more than an hour of city staff time. I think those questions are very important, such as why it is that we allowed people to go out there and poison prairie dogs in our open space without giving common courtesy to allow the city council to know that this event was going to take place so that we could be prepared for any backlash or at least be able to answer questions. Not a single bit of community outreach was done, unlike the previous time that that was took place. We're in the middle of a pandemic where our recreation centers are closed, gyms are closed, and the Second Creek Open Space is one of the few areas that people have the opportunity to go out there and recreate and get fitness. So my motion is to direct city staff to answer those questions that were sent back to them in an email that you have all seen, as well as any subsequent questions that may arise from the information that they come forward with. Mayor Pro Tim? I have a motion in a second to direct city staff to answer my questions regarding the poisoning of prairie dogs in Second Creek Open Space. Is there any discussion? Councilman Hearst?
Yeah, I'd also like to see if you could amend that, um, to work with the vendor to establish a schedule that, uh, a general schedule that we can, we can post. Surrounding communities and businesses are investing quite a bit in, uh, doing the same mitigation on their own properties. And if one is done and the other is not, meaning public land and private land, uh, there, it's a pretty ineffective process. And so, you know, having a schedule outlined, uh, that business and other entities can utilize, uh, and kind of coordinate the timing of those, uh, efforts, I think that would be beneficial for the, the success of the program in the future.
Sure. I will amend my motion to not only answering all the questions and any subsequent questions regarding the poisoning of prairie dogs in the Second Creek Open Space, but also the forwarding of a schedule by the vendor on when those events may take place. Mayor Pro Tim, do you agree with that amendment?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Madera?
Uh, where are we on the, this process that we approved last year's? Was this the last round? Are we finished?
Yeah, that was, uh, kind of one of the questions that needed to be answered, my question. So we'll wait until those questions, uh, are answered, as well as any subsequent questions that come up if this motion is passed.
Well, I just think, uh, you know, if, if that were truly done, then we're kind of beating dead horse and just, you know, going over and over, repeating the, the same thing. So I don't know if it's worth, uh, the time and effort to, you know, go through the same presentation for like the sixth, seventh time already.
Right. And, and my, uh, my questions did not address whether or not we need to go through the same presentation. My question addressed why it is this action was taking place without notification of the city council. My question addressed why did, was it determined that this needed to be done? Where was the study that took place that said that this needed to be done in order to maintain a healthy colony as defined in the original plan that was approved by the city council? As where, so, uh, as well as some other questions. So I'm not asking them to go through the entire presentation.
I get that, but, so my thing is, we approved it as a council and, you know, this going back and forth is, you know, we got to stand by our decision and, you know, just beating the, the dead horse is all we're doing here is just going back and forth. Why, 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 when? The reason why is because we approved it. That, to me, is the simple answer.
Well, that reason why doesn't answer why it is that they went out and did a second round without even notifying us or notifying the community that poisoning was going to take place. So, uh, Councilwoman Noble, you had your hand up, but it came back down. No question from you. Thank you. Councilwoman Grimes, you had your hand up and came down. Councilman Hearst?
Uh, to kind of answer, uh, Councilman Madera's question is, you know, what we approved is a wildlife management plan. Um, so it is my understanding that this is nowhere near done. This is an annual ongoing event. And is managed as needed, uh, as conditions present themselves that are, um, the beginnings of an unhealthy population again. So, and, and there was far more to it than just the, the population or the health of the population of prairie dogs. It was the whole ecosystem, the watershed, and everything else that went into the decision that we made in the past.
Councilwoman Noble?
So I, thank you very much. I would, uh, though contrary to Councilmember Madera, like for the new council to weigh in on this also, if this is going to be an ongoing project. There have been people who spoke before the city council who wanted to do, um, uh, you know, relocation of prairie dogs. And it's my understanding that after, uh, the poisoning last week, that many of the prairie dogs moved to under the, um, electrical towers. And now that becomes, um, I think that's XL Energy's problem at this point, not ours. So it's, it's not solving the problem, and it's causing a lot of upset people again. And I'm not sure that, uh, the decision was the best last time I was at that meeting. I was not a council member, however. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Grimes?
Is it possible to get any feedback from city staff? I mean, if that, if we did, in fact, uh, if the previous council signed a contract for mitigation, um, we should know at least the schedule of when that was going to happen. And, um, if that was the last contracted event, I understand it's an ongoing wildlife, uh, mitigation plan that will always need to take place. But in this particular instance, to me, it sounds like, and forgive me, I, I was not on the council at that time, so I don't know the, the specifics of the contract. But it sounds to me like there was a follow-up to the original, um, mitigation, and that's what happened this week. So if it's, if that is in fact true, and we would have to enter a new contract for any future, um, events to take place, I'm, I'm with Councilman Madera. I think we need to just move forward and, and deal with this on the next round. Although I would say I wish, uh, in hindsight, there had been some notification of the public.
So this contract was not an extension of the original contract that was carried out by the USDA. This was a contract that was done with an individual named Ronnie Purcell. It was a second contract that was executed through the Parks and Recreation Department and the, uh, Public Works Department that did not, uh, in any way tack on to the USDA. Now, the USDA said there may be spot treatment required in the future. However, we were never notified of when that spot treatment may occur or the fact that this contract was being executed in any manner. Does that answer your question? You're muted.
Counsel review. Sorry. The why was the, the, this contract executed without counsel review?
Thank you. Great question.
Well, I'm asking, uh, I'd like city staff to answer the question.
Well, and again, uh, the, there are five questions that I laid out in an email to the city manager that have not been answered. His response to me is that they'll require more than an hour's worth of time to answer those questions. So my motion this evening is to direct the city staff to answer those questions and any subsequent questions.
And I'm asking if city staff feels comfortable answering those questions that might take less than an hour to answer. Some of those are yes or no questions.
Mr. Smith? You're muted?
Yeah, I tried to unmute myself, and then Dylan tries to unmute me. I just stayed muted. Um, yeah, I do think there is some, uh, initial information that we, we could provide, uh, this evening if that's council's desire. And I believe, uh, Mr. Pinklinburg prepared to address a few of those questions. However, the council wants to handle it. If you prefer to follow the motion and get them all at once in written format, that's perfectly fine with us. If you want us to answer some of them tonight, we're happy to try to do that.
Yeah, I think my, my main question is, if this was not an extension of the original contract, at what point was this contract entered into and should council have been consulted prior to, to signing another contract?
The short answer to that is no. Uh, staff has followed the, the wildlife management plan, which was approved and adopted by city council. Um, and then, as I mentioned in my previous remarks, uh, this is a normal part of our routine operation. Every year, there are prairie dogs to be managed. There's pocket gophers that have to be managed. Uh, raccoons build nests in storm sewers, you name it. Uh, there's all kinds of animal, uh, encounters that have to be dealt with. Uh, I'll give you an illustration. A year ago, the, uh, Boys and Girls Club called us up and said, hey, there's a prairie dog, uh, population established on the Mahe Greyhound Park. Uh, they're getting into our ball field. They're, they're starting to damage our landscape. So, okay, we cooperated with them, got a contractor out there to take care of it. There was no public outcry. There was no controversy. It's just part of our routine operation.
Thank you for that explanation, Roger. Um, is it also customary to notice the public when we're going to, to do something like that?
I would have to talk to staff to find out, uh, you know, what the normal practice is on something like that. You know, when it's a limited project, I would, I would guess that it's not. But again, let me verify with staff and get back to you on that.
Okay, I appreciate that. And, and I think the answers that you gave are enough for me to say I'm still with Councilman Madera. If this is an ongoing mitigation plan that council's already approved, I don't think that we need to be in the weeds with city staff, um, when they're, when they're executing on what order, on what, um, agreements have already been made with council. So, um, I would not be in support of the motion.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Um, so I, I, being one of the, the council people that was on when all of this came about, and it was horrible. It was, it was just absolutely horrible. And, you know, we, we got through that. And so my frustration is definitely, I understand this as a wildlife management, you know, plan. But my understanding was it was like a one-time thing. It wasn't supposed to be like we're completely eradicating all of these animals. I thought it was supposed to be a treatment so that, you know, it kind of wiped out basically what, what was there. My frustration, we didn't even know that they were coming back out. They didn't notify. I mean, nothing went out on social media. Nothing went out. And I feel like how is managing a wildlife program completely eradicating them? I mean, how many more times are they going to come out since this was a new contract? So are they just going to continue signing a contract every time that, that, uh, you know, they, they see a, a, a prairie dog? So, I mean, that, that's why I'm support. I want the answers. I want to know where this is coming from, and we can't get those answers without more than an hour of staff time.
Again, the, the short answer is yes, uh, but only as needed. The, the restoration project requires that the vegetation be able to take root and establish itself. And so until that happens, uh, you can't have a overpopulation of prairie dogs. So, uh, we don't know in advance how much that will be, how often that will have to be. So again, it comes back to balancing, uh, how is the vegetation recovering, uh, versus do the, uh, does there have to be additional management of the animals until that happens? So it's an ongoing, uh, process, if you will.
Okay, so I would like to know then, I mean, I, an estimate of, are we looking at, at two years of this happening every three months? I would like to have an idea of what we're, what we're looking at since we did agree to this. I, I would like to know that.
Uh, we may be able to give a general estimate, but the problem is until we know how well the vegetation is establishing, it is going to be somewhat of a, uh, you know, unknown until we have assessment of the establishment of the vegetation. But we'll we'll try to give you a best estimate.
Okay. And last question, was was that Prairie Preservation Group ever notified so that they could maybe have an opportunity to come and move the prairie dogs that were there, like when they came back? I mean, were they ever given an opportunity to remove them rather than doing another treatment?
They were given the opportunity last fall and did not respond to that. So did we reach out to them? I don't know if we reached out to them this this spring now. I'll find that out.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas?
Yes, thank you. I have some other questions, um, you know, directed to Roger as well. I wasn't on city council as well when the contract passed, but she did state, he said, it it's being done, you know, it, well, basically, who you said it's done as needed. Who makes that decision to determine when it's needed? Can you tell me who's who's deciding that?
Well, our city staff, there's a variety of city staff that have expertise with vegetation, with with the ground cover. But we also relied on Smith Environmental to do a study and provide his input.
And and moving forward, like I said, I have several questions too, because can staff look into before this occurs again? Like you said, that our constituents and residents and the city council is made aware of when they plan to do this again, if it can continues. And like I said, I would like more information since I wasn't on city council, since there is city staff. He said that makes that determination along with the other company, how they're qualified to make that determination as well.
Councilman Madera?
Yeah, I think the issue for me becomes, you know, at some point, we have to give staff the autonomy to do their job. We can't be babysitting them, looking over their shoulder, because we'll never be effective that way. And that's what this feels like to me is you want to know every little step that each staff person's doing. And that's not where we're supposed to be as a council. You know, if we're at that level as a council, we're losing sight of the big picture. Because, you know, right now, we're talking about prairie dogs, and this mitigation's been going on for years. It's ever since, you know, I was young, it goes on around the parks, the civic center, the medians by Highway eighty-five. And, you know, anywhere that there's a problem, but it's a case-by-case basis. So if you really want to spend your time determining when's the proper time to do this for prairie dogs, then when are we going to take the time to do what we need to do as a city and to move forward and get some of these bigger picture ideas done? That's why I'm not supportive of this motion, you know. This may have not been right to not notice, and, you know, depending on the amount of the contract, city staff has the authority to enter into contracts as long as it's below a dollar threshold. So, you know, to kind of throw them under the bus and say that they're doing something wrong by just doing their job and taking care of the open space and making sure that they're doing a good job for the residents because one person complained, that, to me, is not fair to staff. And quite frankly, we wasted, you know, half an hour talking about it on council, and we want to waste more staff time looking into the issue. Sometimes we just gotta move on and and move on to bigger and better things.
Thank you. Councilwoman Smith?
I think there's a difference between micromanaging staff and allowing them to have the autonomy that they need. I think there needs to be a balance where they do enter in these contracts. But then they let us know because residents aren't going to them with these questions or coming to us. And then when we don't know what's going on at the staff level, we don't look educated or informed of what's going on in the city. And we should. So I think there's needs to be a balance between staff having the autonomy to do what they need to, but also keeping us informed because residents come to us and not to staff.
Thank you. Councilman Hearst?
Yeah, I also disagree. I I think we agreed to a wildlife management plan. And we agreed to a restoration project that we spent well over fifty thousand dollars in. I personally know that that we've had several complaints go to Parks and Rec for not doing an early spring mitigation treatment and getting in way too late because of the amount of work that went into grading and seeding the open space on Second Creek. I know that several property management companies, at least in the North Range, have monthly contracts for removal of rodents off of their property on a monthly basis to try to save the community money on tree, destroying, community park, destroying, those type of things. And that's just prairie dogs. Do you want staff to notify us every time they clean a raccoon drain out or a raccoon filled drain out? No. So we're specifically calling out prairie dogs in a wildlife management plan, adding, you know, I had a hundred and seventy-five emails last time we had this discussion telling me that, you know, my family was trashed because I I support, you know, providing a safe watershed coming off of twenty square miles of prairie dog habitat at the arsenal. So, you know, to me, it just seems like, again, should we be notified when that's happening? Should there be public notification because of the chemicals used in the process? That seems that seems like a legitimate concern. People's dogs and animals are out there walking. So early notification for something like that in an amenity that is used the way that that one is seems like a legitimate concern. And I could support that. But for us to come after every contract that we move forward with our wildlife mitigation just doesn't seem like a viable or productive conversation for us to have beyond getting some questions answered.
Thank you. One of the things I keep hearing is how this was all about following the wildlife management plan. This is the wildlife management plan right here. It also included citizen outreach. Citizen knowledge and cooperation is important to the success of the project. Prior to going out and poisoning the animals, they're going to do door hangers, signage, digital communication. None of this was done prior to going out for a second round in poisoning. Now, we we can talk about trying to get a raccoon out of a out of a storm drain, but that's not really an apples-to-apples comparison. Because getting a raccoon out of a storm drain doesn't require going out there with a poison and poisoning the ground and making the ground not usable for residents in our community. So I see that as a big difference. So we're a little bit long in the tooth on this discussion. I appreciate everybody's input. We have a motion in a second on the table. We've had discussion. I think, Councilwoman Noble, you want to speak as well real quick, please, before we move on and have a vote on this?
I'm actually going to save my comment. It has, it's tangential.
Okay, thanks. That's a big word that I'll have to look up in a later time. So we have a motion in a second to direct city staff to answer those questions as well as provide a timeline on when future prairie dog mitigation will take place in the Second Creek Open Space. We'll take a real call vote.
Councilmember Madera?
No.
Councilmember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Noble?
No.
Councilmember Wariola?
No.
Councilmember Hearst?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
I have five ayes and four nays. Motion passes.
Thank you. I look forward to the answers to those questions. One last time, is there any other administrative council business? Councilwoman Noble?
Yes, I would just like, what I was going to say is that the discussion that we just had are the kinds of things that would come up during a review. And that's what we're talking about, and that's what's coming. Two incidences of communication you have raised in the last hour, however long you've been talking, which were about Suncor and then about prairie dogs. And I do think that those are issues that we deal with when we talk about a review of someone's performance. That's the the best time to accomplish that now that it has already occurred. And I would like to ask one other thing, Mayor Hughesman. I, this is the third meeting that you have used your position to put slides up on the screen that none of us have seen, that the staff has not seen. That is, I think, not in the spirit of council policy. If it is, then we should all have that opportunity to have visuals with anything that we're talking about at any evening. We need to keep in mind that we ought not to have big surprises for us or for our staff, even though we're in this Zoom environment. And even though our IT staff has chosen a webinar system which allows the hosts, and more than one host can be named, to do things like put up slides. So I would just like you to please consider that, Mr. Mayor, that it, I don't think it is the best use of your authority. We are all equal according to the charter, and I would like it to be seen that way. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually have turned on the feature where all of you are able to share the same way that I have. All you need to do is go down into the share thing. There's a little option that I have where I can say who can share, only the hosts or all panelists. And I've turned it on so that all panelists can share should you have a need to do so in the future. And and it was it was turned on during the meeting so that you were able to share if you needed to.
Then I would simply like to say that I don't think it's appropriate for any one of us to surprise our colleagues, nor do I think it's appropriate to surprise our staff. If it grows out of a discussion, then that makes sense. And in addition, we are surprising our own constituents who don't have an opportunity to speak to any of these things. So I think it's, I don't think it's something that we should take advantage of simply because it's available to us via this Zoom method that the IT staff chose.
Oh, thank you. I I don't see that any different than whenever somebody wants to pass something out in a meeting and request that it get passed out to anybody else. So, but thank you for your input. I'll talk to the city manager and the city attorney regarding whether or not I violated council policy on that. I would also, since we're going to discuss that, though, I think that accusing me of trying to surprise people is not fair. And our city council law policy does say that you will not question the motives of your peers. So please don't question my motives whenever I put that information up there and say that I'm trying to do it for one purpose or another. Councilwoman Grimes?
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, we also have a policy that says that council will not chastise staff. And I feel like that's an overstep that happens often. If we want to talk about policies, there are plenty of them that we should review and be familiar with and adhere to.
Oh, thank you.
And I would also agree with Ms. Noble. It's not fair to surprise anybody with slides, websites, whatever you have, without at least asking first. We do have that opportunity during chamber meetings to pass something to city staff to share, but we have to request to do that. So I would agree with Ms. Noble.
Thank you. Councilman Hearst?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to disagree just because administrative business is for council members to bring up new business. But we're putting it all out there. I've heard many times that people are upset that we're trying to gain votes beforehand and things like that. All right, so we're going to come cold turkey. We're going to show what new business we need to get out there. And we're going to ask staff to review it and come back with an answer. So I think new surprising elements, this is the time to do that. That is exactly what it's for. You know, notifying everybody early of what we would like to talk about could be considered a professional courtesy. But in every situation, that is not always available. Several times in my experience on council, I can take a document in hand, ask them to use the projector and put it on screen. That is utilized many times in my experience. But I will agree that asking council to approve that we're putting something on screen is a good practice for us to continue using, and I think we've used that in the past. So although I have no problem presenting new new items, new business out of the blue, I I would ask that if we're going down that route that we just asked to have a vote, that we'll have that discussion to put something on screen, and we move on from there.
Thank you. Councilman Wariola?
Yeah, and I think I would like to see the policy, you know, I I mean, I don't, you know, this is just evidence and pictures and stuff. And and, you know, I I see no problem with that. I think it should be fair, definitely. But I mean, if Robert could review, since we're in this new era, right, of Zoom meetings, of of what new normal is, what kind of policies out there about doing stuff like that? I I just think just to cover all of us. So I'd like to see that.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney, can you please provide that with us prior to our next meeting?
All that unmuting to say yes, I will look at the policies.
Thank you. Seeing no other requests for administrative council business, we'll move on to council report. City Manager?
I'm here tonight as a as a guest. I'm filling in as the acting city manager. And I certainly respect this council's ability to ask difficult questions of staff and redirect staff when you may have gotten off the path from what your expectations are. But I'm compelled, given the tenor of this conversation tonight, to assure this council that it has a workforce that is dedicated to providing exceptional service to the residents of this community. You have a staff who has come to work in the face of a pandemic and provided services well beyond our expectations, some of whom have contracted the virus in the middle of this pandemic while serving the residents of this community. You indeed have a professional, caring, and dedicated staff. And they will work hard, as I will tomorrow, to begin addressing these issues that you've laid out for us tonight and to do so while attempting to navigate changing public health orders, changing guidance from the state of Colorado. And we will continue to try to serve and meet your expectations and deliver to this community the best service we possibly can. The city manager's report was sent out to you and to the community. Some notable things that were included in that report include the Walgreens closing at sixty-eleven Dexter Street. That Walgreens is permanently closing. And all the pharmacy prescriptions will be transferred from that business to the King Superstore at sixty-second Avenue in Vasquez. This is the outcome of Walgreens deciding to close more than two hundred stores nationwide as a result of the COVID-nineteen crisis. I'm happy to point out that one of our employees, Chris Papp, who's a member of our Building Safety Division in Community Development, has been nominated as the 2020 Instructor of the Year for the Independent Electrical Contractors of the Rocky Mountain Division. He has been teaching up to three classes a week, trying to help people improve their skills. And we're very, very proud of him and the nomination that he's received. Staff worked to fulfill city council's request to promote the graduations and celebrate graduates in our community. Those banners have been received and will be placed at Adam City High School, Lester Arnold, and Platt Valley High School. Or I'm sorry, Prairie View High School. I'm happy to answer any questions about the city manager's report and thank council for the opportunity to serve this evening.
Are there any questions regarding the city manager report? Councilwoman Grimes?
Trey, I don't have a question. I just want to thank you for your candid comments, and I want to make sure that Trey, I don't have a question. I just wanna thank you for your candid comments, and I wanna make sure that you and city staff know that um, I personally care and appreciate um, the work that you guys do, and I know you're working hard for us. And um, if any of my comments tonight were taken any other way, I I do apologize. I know that you work hard for us. I know staff works hard for us, and I appreciate that work.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Fesley, your report?
I have nothing further this evening.
Thank you. Are there any other council members wishing to make a report?
Seeing none, I'll follow up with my report. Um, continue to participate in the Metro Mayor Caucus meetings as well as the Adams County meetings uh, as they come up. Um, last week, they had a good conversation with uh, Congressman Promutter. And um, as far as where we're moving forward in uh, direction, um, excuse me, that was two weeks ago. Last week was uh, the school districts uh, participated and talked about what we can expect going into the future. There's a lot of discussion as far as the financial impact that this is going to have on the school districts. And uh, right now, the current estimations are about four hundred ninety-one million dollar budget shortfall in education in the state of Colorado. Um, as well as also, how are we going to deal with social distancing requirements moving forward into the new school year? It's very possible that we will see split schedules where some schools go or some kids go to school on one day and have kids go the other day. And uh, it's backed up with virtual learning. So I think this is something that they're still trying to figure out. Um, the governor has sent out new guidance this evening, uh, or this afternoon. One of them was on testing. Um, everybody is eligible for testing if you are symptomatic. You, it is a free test in the state of Colorado to go do that. They've ramped up testing, provided locations. That information has been shared. Uh, they have developed their guidelines on restaurants. Um, they were supposed to be announced either today or tomorrow. Um, but we're looking at uh, implementing those orders whenever they come out as far as how they can operate. There is a lot of concern from the restaurant industry regarding uh, if they're required to open up with only twenty-five percent uh, capacity and the difficulty in doing that and how it will not be financially advantageous for them to do so. So we will probably look for more restaurants closing and hopefully we don't lose any in our community. Um, that's all I have for the report. Uh, there being no other business to come for the city of Commerce City. We will adjourn this meeting to the NIGID meeting. This time, we'll call the NIGID meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mayor Hughesman?
Present.
Vice Chair Frank?
Present.
Board Member Madera?
Present.
Board Member Alan Thomas?
Present.
Board Member Noble?
Present.
Board Member Wariola?
Present.
Board Member Hearst?
Present.
Board Member I believe Board Member Grimes left the meeting. Uh, Board Member Smith?
Present.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, our, Mr. Chair, you have a quorum?
Thank you. Right now, I'm looking for a motion in a second to excuse those members not present. Councilmember Madera?
Move to excuse the members not present?
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas?
Second motion.
Have a motion in a second to excuse those members not present, although, or we'll take a roll call vote.
Uh, Board Member Madera?
Yes.
Remember Alan Thomas?
Yes.
Board Member Noble?
Yes.
Board Member Wariola?
Yes.
Uh, Board Member Hearst?
Yes.
Board Member Grimes, Board Member Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Frank?
Yes.
Chair Hughesman?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Eight to zero. Looks like the individual that left us has returned. The motion, her vote will not need to stand. Uh, right now, we need to do adoption of remote meeting procedures. Looking for a motion in a second to adopt the remote meeting and public hearing procedures used by the city. Councilmember Madera?
Move to adopt the remote meeting procedures used by the city?
Councilman Hearst?
I second that motion.
Have a motion in a second to adopt the remote meeting and public hearing procedures used by the city. Is there any discussion? Mayor Protem?